Good evening and welcome to the December 17th meeting of the Glendale City Council, being called to order at 6:07 PM. May we start with the roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Protem Brotman.
Here.
Council members Garpetian.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Asatrian.
Here.
Okay, would the audience kindly rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Father, who hath sent us, creation of God, indivisible, and infinite, just as it is.
And please remain standing. We have an invocation today from Cassie McCarty from the Glendale Memorial. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Council members, I have a poem written by Reverend Howard Thurman in honor of this season of light. Many religions celebrate holidays with light and candles, so this is on behalf of all of our community and fellow worshippers. I will light candles this holiday season. Candles of joy despite all the sadness, candles of hope where despair may keep watch, candles of courage where fear may be present, candles of peace, can't, excuse me, candles of peace for tempest-tossed days, candles of grace to ease heavy burdens, candles of love to inspire all of my living, candles that will burn all the year long. May everyone have a warm holiday season. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you. You may be seated, and we will start off with the city clerk's report.
Yes, the agenda for the December 17, 2024, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on December 11, 2024, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, and as you in the audience are watching from home will note, there are three of us here in council chambers. Two of our colleagues are at home feeling unwell, and we have a procedure we need to go through under AB 2449 to allow them to participate remotely. So I will first turn it over to them for a disclosure that they need to make that they are ill and that they are alone. So we'll start with Mayor Asatrian.
Good evening, everyone. I have the flu, and I'm here with Buddy.
And Buddy is a non-human under 18, right?
Right.
Okay. And Councilmember Najarian.
Everyone, hi, everyone. Sorry, I can't be there. I'm at home with a cold, and there is no adult in the room in the house.
Okay, thank you. With that, we need a motion to allow them to remotely participate.
Wishing both my colleagues a speedy recovery, I will make the motion. Second.
Okay, and roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Brotman.
Yes.
Councilmembers Garpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Asatrian.
Yes.
Okay, and with that, we turn to presentation of appointments. Could you read the first item into the record, please?
Yes, the first item is the cancellation notice for the upcoming council meetings. There will be no city council meeting on December 24 and 31, 2024. The next regular council meeting and housing meeting will be on January 7, 2025.
Okay, and what is that beeping? Is that anybody's mic? Okay, thank you. And then the proclamation, please.
Yes, we have a proclamation designating the month of December 2024 as Family Celebration and Appreciation Month.
Okay, and I have the honor of reading the proclamation, which is very timely, given the holidays. And I think we're breaking new ground here to create a Family Appreciation Month. I don't know if this is a thing, but maybe it will become a thing after we've done it. So I'll read the proclamation. And who's accepting the proclamation? Do we have anyone? We don't have anyone accepting the proclamation?
If I may, I asked for the proclamation, and I didn't want it to limit to an organization or two. This is for the entire, for all the residents of the city of Glendale, the entire community, basically. Thank you.
So maybe you can go down and accept it.
Maybe so.
Okay, whereas Family Celebration and Appreciation Month honors the special bonds that shape our lives and is a reminder of the strength, love, and support that families provide, no matter how they are defined. And whereas healthy families are the cornerstone of a thriving community fostering love, compassion, and care that build the foundation for a stronger and more resilient society. And whereas the strength of families has been especially evident during challenging times, as they adapt, support one another, and find resilience in the face of adversity. And whereas the city of Glendale is committed to supporting healthy families through investments in local programs and resources that enhance literacy through our Library Arts and Culture Department, recreation through our Community Services and Parks Department, assistance through Homeless Services and Domestic Violence Prevention Programs, and economic opportunities through our Homeless Services, Economic Development Office, and Verdugo Job Center. And whereas families contribute to the richness of our community by celebrating diversity, teaching shared values, and nurturing future generations. And whereas, as the end of the year approaches, let's reflect on the importance of healthy family bonds and the contributions they make to the well-being of our city. Now therefore, I, well, not I, Mayor Elena Asatrian, mayor of the city of Glendale, does hereby proclaim December 2024 as Family Celebration and Appreciation Month in the city of Glendale, and encourage all residents to recognize and celebrate the value of healthy families, reflect on their contributions, and continue fostering environments where families can thrive together. Let us extend gratitude to all healthy families, single parents, foster families, and all caregivers, mentors, and friends who provide love and stability and work together to create a city where every member feels supported, valued, and empowered to thrive. Let us also remember to reach out to friends, neighbors, and loved ones who may be experiencing difficulties during the holidays, offering them compassion, connection, and support so that no one feels alone during this season of togetherness. Beautifully written. Thank you. We have a speaker. Okay, so I guess we will do that. You don't, well, there's no other formality. We have the proclamation here. Normally, we have somebody that comes to the podium and speaks. Maybe Mr. Garpetian, you would like to say something? I'll give you, if you do, I'll give you the floor first, and then we'll hear from our speaker.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just want to thank everyone for, this proclamation was not, it was not challenging, but it was not easy to put together to include everyone in our community. And also, not many proclamations, similar proclamation has been issued in many cities, so we couldn't find a sample of it even. So the language came from me, from our staff, from the mayor, and we all put our heads together to put this proclamation together for our community, basically, especially in December, in Christmas time, New Year's time, holidays time. It's important to come together and appreciate each other, value each other's presence, and especially with, if you have elderly parents, cherish them every day because, you know, it's, they're the backbone of our families. So with that, I want to thank everyone who supported this proclamation. I did, again, I didn't want to limit it to one organization or another, so this is for the entire community, and hopefully next year, we could have some events put together and organize some events, so all the families can come, attend those events and learn and appreciate each other's values and traditions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I understand the mayor would like to say a few words. Mayor Asatrian?
Sure. I just wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Garpetian for initiating this proclamation. I think all of you have very often heard me speak about the foundation which my family has attributed to what I consider my strength and my support system. But I also speak about how, as years have passed, I also recognize that not every family has that support system, and especially during the holidays when families can, or individuals can be estranged from their families, or they're going through separation or loss. The holidays can also be a very, very difficult time for many, and so I want to use this opportunity to not just say thank you to my family and all the healthy families in Glendale, but also want to remind everyone to make sure to reach out to those that you know are having a difficult time. Whether you are a chosen family or one by blood, it makes all of us stronger when we're together and we're supporting each other. So thank you again.
Thank you. Any other comments from my colleagues?
All well said.
Okay, yeah, all well said. Okay, we have, we have one speaker? We have?
Yes, we have one public comment by Mike Mohill.
Okay, let's hear the public comment, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, council, oops, good evening, people in the viewing audience. My name is Mike Mohill. Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. Thank you, Councilman Vartan Garpetian, for the family proclamation. You know, we have Women's Commission proclamation, teenage, what happened to teenager? Inclusion. We have all these proclamations, and they're for special groups. We don't, let's have, let's have a proclamation for teenagers. Let's recognize them. We recognize women. Councilman Vartan Garpetian, I appreciate you bringing up the family. This is the importance. Hopefully, people remember that this is more than just family. This is also, when we say the word holiday, let's use the word Christmas. That's what it is. It's Christmas holiday. The person who came here speaking from the cloth, she couldn't use the word Christmas. She said holiday season. She's woke. And our city clerk brought her in. We don't need wokeism at city council. We're all Americans. We all pay taxes. We should all be treated equal. We, you know, teenage commission, young adult commission, inclusiveness, proclamations. Thank you, Councilman Garpetian.
Thank you.
By the way, your clock is not working here. Excuse me. Your timer is not working. No, it's not. Now it, I never saw it.
Yeah.
Mr. Mohill, we can see the time. You have a minute left.
No, no, I'm not questioning myself. Anybody else who could come here, they don't see the, they don't see the clock.
Okay, we'll take, we'll take a look at that. Can somebody from IT take a look and make sure that the clock is working there? Okay, what's next?
Next, our consent items, including minutes, the following our routine, and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. Mayor Protem Brotman, we do have one public comment, an item 4J.
On item 4J?
Yes, a member of the public would like to request that that item be pulled.
Do my colleagues wish to remove any other items, either here on the dais or from home? No? If not, then I'll take a motion for the balance of the consent calendar, all the items except for 4J.
So moved.
All second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Brotman.
Yes.
Councilmembers Garpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Asatrian.
Yes.
Okay, so we move on to 4J. Would you kindly read that into the record?
Yes, 4J is City Attorney Regarding Extension of Nominating Period for Boards and Commissions. One motion extending nominating period by 60 days.
Okay, and we have one speaker on that item?
Yes, we have one speaker on that item. Ellen Durham.
Mr. Durham, you have three minutes.
I hope it's working. It is now. Thank you. Mayor Protem Brotman, members of the council, thank you for letting me speak. I'm Ellen Durham. I urge the council not to extend the nominating process for boards and commissions beyond the February extension. There are longstanding vacancies and board and commission members who are termed out, and that's been the case for far too long. Also, please give appropriate weight to attendance history when deciding whether to reappoint or replace board and commission members. I did some, one of the boards I watch pretty regularly is the Design Review Board. I did some research. During all of 2024 to date, and there are five members on the commission, they had 18 meetings. Only two meetings this year had five members in attendance. Only four meetings this year, or 22%, had four members. The ones with five members were 11%. The other 12 meetings had only three members in attendance. That's a full two-thirds of their meetings this year. And when there are only three, that means a vote could be two to one, and only two members of the Design Review Commission, or Board, I'm sorry, could approve the design of a project. The, it is not the same board members who are missing meetings. It rotates, gives me the suspicion that they coordinate the absences, so they don't have to be there, and they know they'll have a quorum. But you can't, you know, it's all of the members who miss meetings. It's not just a few. And the DRB is a very important board. They don't just make decisions on single-family homes. They make decisions on large commercial projects, multifamily residential. Their last meeting with only three members, they approved the design of 610 North Brand, which are twin 36-story towers just below the 134 freeway. I think that, you know, their attendance is, history is not satisfactory, given the decisions that they're making. Thank you.
Okay, fair point. Just a question. The new deadline, once we extend it, would be February?
14th.
14th, okay. Okay, any questions or comments from my colleagues about this item?
Move the item.
Okay, we have a motion.
All second.
And a second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Brotman.
Yes.
Councilmembers Garpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Asatrian.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, we move on to council and staff comments. Who would like to begin? Councilmember Kasakian?
I don't want to make a long meeting any longer. I'll just say, since this is our last meeting of the year, I want to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and we'll see you in 2025, God willing.
Mr. Garpetian?
Yes, just wanted to mention one event I attended last week. It was Armenian-American Medical Society's event, Christmas and New Year event. And this is an event that they come together and raise funds for scholarship for students who are attending medical school, any kind of medical field. And the GPA is very high, and they need some help. So through this, this event and fundraising, they, they support the students. And I also like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and happy everything and anything else that you observe. Hopefully, 2025 will be a better year for all of us.
Thank you. Mayor Asatrian, anything from you?
I do have a point of clarification that I need from staff. Several months ago, I had brought forth that I'd like for us to do some sort of Christmas town or Santa's Town. I thought it was going to be something that staff was going to work on for this holiday season. It hasn't come to fruition. I have sent some samples of what I was looking for us to have in Glendale, that they have, for example, in Irvine, in Santa Monica, and so forth. Do I need to request a formal RFP process for us to get bids, or is this something that staff can just go and work on? I just want to make sure that, you know, we get ahead of it for next year.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Asatrian. You don't need to formally request that we issue an RFP. Staff can get some quotes and put out a specification, so folks can bid on it. But we need to appropriate the funding in the next year, next budget cycle.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Najarian?
Just Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, Happy Armenian Christmas on January 6, and everyone be safe.
Thank you. And for me, I actually have some nominations to board and commission panels, so I want to get your pens out. So for the panels that I'm on with Councilmember Kasakian, we've agreed to put forward four names. For the GWP Commission, it would be Ted Flanagan. For the Planning Commission, it would be Edith Fuentes, who is a current incumbent. For the Audit Commission, Alex Perahan, also an incumbent. Building and Fire Board of Appeals, JR Ankoko. And I also met with, with Mayor Asatrian, and we agreed on two appointments, or two nominations, I should be more accurate there. For Arts and Culture, Sue Bell Yank, who currently serves on that commission. And for our Parks Commission, Regina Alkisar, who's currently, I believe, the president. And so those are all the names. As far as, you know, our new deadline on February 14, I would just ask that staff think about and recommend to us a voting procedure if and when some commission seats remain unfilled at the end of the 60-day extension, because I know at that point, they will be coming to the full council, and I hope that that process is smooth and efficient. And we know exactly how we're going to review the applicants that we have and, and make those decisions. And Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Armenian Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, and Happy New Year. And I hope everybody enjoys their time with family and friends. Thank you. Any staff comments? No? Okay, so what is next?
Next is community event announcements, three minutes, five-speaker limit per mayor policy. This item also permits speakers wishing to speak under general oral communications, subject to the three-minute time limit. Discussion is limited to matters not on the agenda. Mayor Protem Brotman, we currently have five speaker cards for this item. Our first speaker is Patrick Murphy.
And Mr. Murphy, you have three minutes.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Asatrian and Councilmember Najarian, thank you for attending. I hope you're feeling better soon. I had the opportunity on December 9 to attend a general plan update, land use and mobility, and environmental justice meeting. It was a scoping meeting, and it was the only scoping meeting related to this project. It's an update of the general plan. There were four members of the community that were in attendance, four active members, myself, Mr. Durham. There was a Glendale Environmental Coalition person and a GHCC person. There were actually six members of staff that were in attendance. Two of them were consultants. The notice of the preparation scope comments are due and a deadline of January 10. The comment period for this started on November 20 of this year. This is all during the holiday season. This is all during the holiday season. The state is not requiring this update at this time, and the outreach has been woefully inadequate. Mayor Satrian, I know you're a champion of doing further outreach. It needs to be done here. They propose significant housing density increases. For example, there are parking lots in the Montrose area above Honolulu, and no notice has gone to the Spar Heights residents. Excuse me one moment, please. Just to read a provision. The realistic, this is from the document, the notice of preparation. The realistic build-out of the proposed general plan use element could yield a total of up to one-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-four housing units from sixty-eight thousand today, and a population of over four-hundred-thousand people in the city of Glendale over the next twenty years. I feel like we're doing this backwards. We're not going to the people first to determine the scope of this EIR. We're going to spend money on an environmental impact draft report, and then it's going to go to a final. And we're spending all of this money without notifying the public, without engaging the public. Four-hundred-thousand people in the next twenty years is what is estimated. It's wrong to not contact the people and go out with a strong outreach before any money is spent on an EIR. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Mohill.
Can I ask a quick question before we move forward? I don't know who can answer it, but for this meeting, was there a notice sent out to the members of the communities? Or because I know the Rossmoine area and Royal Canyon area, they're very interested in participating and understanding what's going on with the parking lots south of the church, basically, across the Glendale College.
Mayor, councilmembers, there was quite a bit, actually. We did noticing through the county clerk and the state, which we're required to do, publishing the local newspaper. A meeting notice also went out on the city's environmental review website, as well as the Glendale Plan website, email blast to everyone who subscribes to these websites, another blast the morning of the actual meeting. We also posted on several of our social media pages of the city. We ran an ad on GTV6. And then we also put it on the city's calendar webs, or on the website on the city's calendar for them to be able to view. There's also been several community meetings throughout this process to be able to gain feedback as we developed the alternatives that were there. And there will be continued public engagement, whether it's here with our Planning Commission, with our Sustainability Commission as well. We'll continue to have those meetings as that EIR is drafted, and then as the draft EIR itself comes out for review by the council and the public.
Okay, I think one suggestion I have is use this forum, because, believe it or not, almost everybody in this town watches this city council meeting. And use this forum at the three-minute, you know, community events announcement portion, and maybe publicize some of these meetings, so people can, they would know next week or two weeks later, there's an important meeting. I mean, four people attending an important meeting like that, out of all the effort that we had, you know, despite the fact that we did everything that, you know, in our toolbox, and still four people showed up, and they are the people who are, you know, always there, no matter what. So I believe that this is a best forum for us to announce some of these meetings and get the community involved. So at the end, no one can say, "I didn't know," and "I didn't hear about it." Because you don't want to go too far in the process, and then the city hall gets jam-packed against whatever that project is, or whatever that EIR survey is for.
Before you sit down, Mr. Calvert, could you just very quickly explain what this maximum development potential number means? Because I don't want people to misunderstand. I think the number that was cited is a correct number, but what is the context?
It's under the premise of obviously a maximum development scenario. What I would describe the land use element as being kind of at the fifty-thousand-foot level. It sets the overarching policies that we're looking for in terms of organization and use. We are going to study what we call the maximum development, so that we can understand the, I guess you could say, the worst-case or maximum development capacity and the impact on the city itself. Whether or not that is actually achieved is to be determined at several different stages later. We will have to create the actual zoning, which will have to come before council, the development standards as well. There's a number of kind of key pieces that still follow up. The land use element really is just kind of an overarching guidebook, if you will, and it's not the actual tools that are in place that tell you how many units. What I would also say is, we hear references about the parking lots. I know that was a discussion we had here as well. One of the reasons why this is being considered and why we're even looking at this is that council did request it in earlier sessions. But more importantly, what we're seeing is the state is changing the rules of the Surplus Land Act about every ninety days. And we can either go ahead and lock these in now with the terms and the rules and the regulations that we want as a city, as this council and this community wants, or we can risk losing that to the state. And we've seen that happen in other places where we've lost that local control.
Okay, thank you. All right, next speaker is, what, Mike Mohill?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember.
You're getting me in trouble. I'm getting too many compliments tonight, Mr. Brotman.
Good evening, councilmember. My name is Mike Mohill. In a recent survey, why was the fact that nearly seventy-six percent of Glendale residents were against the bike lanes on North Brand Boulevard? This was a question that Councilmen Arden and Najarian asked at the December ten, 2024 council meeting. Who was responsible for this omission? Was it our city manager or his staff? Who received their marching orders from the council? Councilmembers Garpetian and Najarian were on record, the bike lanes, against, pardon me, against bike lanes on Brand Boulevard. Going to the December ten meeting, the so-called progressive, woke liberal Democrats, Satrian, Brotman, and Kasakian were leaning to proceed in keeping and expanding the bike lanes, not only on Brand Boulevard, but everywhere. This bike lane disaster on Brand cost Glendale taxpayers over, mind yourself, over one-point-eight-million dollars for less than a mile of bike lanes. Congratulations. The vote was four to one with Dictator Dan, the only council member who approved the circus on Brand Boulevard. If better informed and better organized, the opposition to Locust Center Avenue project would have been defeated. Unfortunately, the bicycle coalitions from Glendale, Burbank, Pasadena, and Los Angeles won. We have over one-point-two-billion dollars, mind you, of unfunded pension obligations for our government-union workforce. Tearing up streets for bike lanes is a luxury we cannot afford, especially when electric and water rates are being raised drastically to improve our utility infrastructure. We are asking council tonight to agendize another meeting to cancel the Locust Center Avenue bike project, which will cost Glendale taxpayers millions of dollars. It would be worse on Locust Center Avenue, where a lineup of cars and their car engines would be idling and polluting. The Locust Center Avenue area is surrounded by single-family residential neighborhoods. I know personally, a great many residents on Locust Center Avenue are very not aware. They are not aware of this notification of the future disaster. Also, Glendale residents do not want BRT, Bus Rapid Transit, transportation, in which bike lanes replace commercial traffic lanes. Only a handful of Glendale residents are for BRT. The people have spoken.
Our next public comment is by John Aranjio.
Counsel. You build, 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 and now it's coming back to us in a form of astronomical water-power rates. You allow the building of these mega-high-density apartments, but we do not have adequate water and power supply. GWP charges an extra amount on water bills because supposedly we're still in a drought, and now we're paying more money for our electricity, Dictator Dan. Before you allow these destructive developers to come into our city and build, aren't the plans supposed to go through an environmental impact study? What used to be ten single-family dwellings are turning into four-hundred-mega-apartment units, give or take. But it's not the water and power impact that makes the difference to you guys. The only thing that seems to be in your concern is these mega apartments allow five to ten, at most, units being for low-income people. But the other three-hundred-and-ninety units are for people with a decent income. All in all, it puts a strain on our water supply. Remember, when occupied, these units need to flush toilets, turn on air conditioners, et cetera. So now Glendale residents are forced to pay these ridiculous water and power rates, Dictator Dan. So I came up with a brilliant idea. Let's put a moratorium on building these mega apartments instead of charging the city residents these lucrative increases. Why not, why don't we have the developers pay for the new infrastructure that's needed? Seems fair to me. If developers want to build, they need to pay, not mom and pop on fixed incomes. Developers don't have a fixed income. As for your new electrical rates, my mother doesn't want Christmas lights up this year because she's afraid of the consequences. Yep, the electrical bill. Try reasoning with an eighty-eight-year-old woman about Glendale electrical rates, Dictator Dan. I'm sure your houses are shining brightly this year. May God bless Glendale and its residents.
Our next public comment is by Tony Passarella.
Good evening, Council, Tony Passarella. Mr. Satrian, you wanted me to come back, so here I am. There's a new sheriff in town, and his name is Donald J. Trump, given a mandate by the people. Something old becoming new again. Pro-God, love of country, patriotism, and freedom, restoring power to the people. Patriotism and freedom, restoring power to the people. Big government-controlled paradigm squashed, leaving Democrat Party on life support. Corporate heads, left-leaning media, celebrities, and world leaders all acquiescing to Trump, the most powerful man in the world, and he hasn't even been sworn in yet. Mr. Satrian, that leads me to say it's time to at least move a little bit more over to the middle. Enough of this authoritarian-leaning rule. The citizens who live, work, and pay taxes in Glendale are sick and tired of it. And you are not doing yourself any favors by acting this way. The latest feedback on social media from people, when you ejected me from the meeting two weeks ago, is very negative. Don't call yourself Armenian. You disgust me. Ellen is a tyrant, et cetera, et cetera. Please listen. Give us something back. Change the camera angle back. There's a double standard here, a bias. You, your staff, people you are giving proclamations to, all get FaceTime. And we, the people, get our backs. How about taking the protocol sign down outside the council chambers? It's about attitude. You can't control people by putting them in a box and not allowing them to express themselves. People can and will control themselves if given a polite, respectable directive. Case in point, last week's council meeting. You did a very good job. Please, no more banging the gavel. No more threatening people to be ejected. No more ejecting people. I know you love the city and want to be called the daughter of the city, and I personally want to like you. So please, just make some changes, because what you are doing is working for you, but it's not attractive and not working for the people. Case in point, you lost your assembly bid, and your future in politics is on the line in the pro-freedom Trump presidency era coming up. Suggestion, how about taking your camera crew to Essentia and publish a video report from there, and stay away from areas where drag queens are interacting with children? People are forgiving, and you can win some of them back. Merry Christmas to you and Happy New Year, Mr. Satrian, and everybody within the sound of my voice. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Next speaker is Beth Brooks.
As you know, I spoke earlier at the Housing Authority meeting, and I want to thank Mr. Brotman, Mr. Kasakian, and the mayor for what I thought were excellent, very heartening comments. Where my presentation is? Oh, there it is. I think my surprise is that the Housing Division's priority, for at least the twenty-three years that I know, is just long-term development in the city, building new housing. According to the Housing Division website, you could go to the next slide. According to the Housing Division website, no, that's not the next slide. It doesn't matter. Twelve-hundred-and-thirty-eight units have been built in almost fifty years. Just according to the last census, there are twenty-five-thousand people in this city living in poverty. So if you figure that it took fifty years to put people in affordable housing, twelve-hundred-and-thirty-eight people, and if people don't understand that only thirty percent of those twelve-hundred-and-thirty-eight people have to be people who are actually quite low-income. The rest can be up to eighty percent of annual median income, and that's quite a bit of money. So I'm appalled at that. I'll be perfectly honest. And I represent those people who really need help. And so for the amount of money that you're spending, because there is a project that, I don't know if it's broken ground yet, but it's twenty-nine-million dollars to developers, because developers are the ones who are making the money, not the people who need to stay in their apartments. They're getting from you, from the taxpayers, twenty-nine-million dollars to build new housing that only a certain percentage will actually help low-income people. Your priority has to be keeping people in their apartments. You don't need new building. I know that, Mr. Kasakian, everybody thinks we should have a long-term solution, a priority, and a short term, but they actually conflict with each other. The long-term solution of new housing is taking the money away from people who need help, whether it's five-hundred dollars a month or six-hundred dollars a month. The money is there. I know, Mr. Kasakian, I don't have all the specifics on the budget, but I know you have maybe ten million, twenty million. You can give people six-hundred dollars a month. That's seventy-two-hundred dollars a year, times whatever it is, a thousand people, two thousand people. You only helped twelve-hundred-and-thirty-eight people in fifty years. That, you have to have a moratorium on this development. Somebody else spoke about the electricity prices. We do not need new housing. We don't. Developers need to build new housing, but we don't need new housing. We need to help people stay in their apartments. That should be a priority. Because what is the mandate of the government to help the lowest common denominator? Triage. Help the people who need it the most first. And the people who need it the most first are the struggling renters, not the developers. Thank you.
Thank you, and that is all.
There are five speakers?
Yes.
What's our next item, please?
Next item is Item Seven, Adoption of Ordinances, A Committee Services and Parks Regarding Ordinance Authorizing the Execution of the Wireless Communications Facility Lease Agreement Between the City of Glendale and New Singular Wireless PCSLs at eighteen-eighty Loma Vista Drive, Introduced by Najarian on twelve-three-twenty-four.
Okay, and Mr. City Manager, anything you need to say about this?
No, Mayor Protem Brotman.
The ordinance was introduced by Councilmember Najarian. We need to vote on it today. Councilmember Najarian, would you like to move this item?
Yes, I'll move it, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Brotman.
Yes.
Councilmembers Garpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Asadrian.
Yes.
Okay, and our next item.
Next are action items. Action Item Eight, Finance Regarding Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-three, Twenty-Twenty-Four Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-four, Twenty-Twenty-Five, First Quarter Financial Status Report, and Classification and Compensation Alignment. One motion to accept the City of Glendale's annual comprehensive financial report, Report on Internal Control Over Financial Reporting and Communication with Those Charged with Governance for the Fiscal Year Ended June Thirty, Twenty-Twenty-Four. Two motion to note and file the financial status report for the year ended June Thirty, Twenty-Twenty-Four. Three motion to note and file the financial status report for the period ending September Thirty, Twenty-Twenty-Four. Four motion to increase the citywide authorized salary position count. Five, resolution providing for the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees of the City of Glendale, covered by the Glendale Management Association Memorandum of Understanding, including employee relations exempt classifications. Six, resolution providing- Six resolution providing for the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees of the City of Glendale, covered by the Glendale City Employees Association Memorandum of Understanding, including confidential and hourly classifications. Seven resolution providing for the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees of the City of Glendale, represented by the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 18. Eight resolution providing for the establishment of classification titles and compensation for executive-level employees of the City of Glendale.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes. Mayor Protem Brotman, Mayor City Council. In the interest of time, I'm going to turn it over. This is going to be a three-part presentation. I will start off with Shunjun Lee, our Assistant Director of Finance, who will introduce our external auditor, who is on the call, and then move along to Mari Kuramian, our Deputy Director of Finance. And last but not least, when it comes to the Class and Comp report, it'll be done by Paula Adams, our Chief Human Resources Officer. Every department director is in attendance in case there are questions that we need to direct to those departments directly. Thank you. Shunjun?
Mayor and council members, my name is Shunjun.
Could you move the mic a little bit closer to yours?
Sorry. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Shunjun Lee, and I'm the Assistant Director of the Finance Department. And first, I will present the financial result and audit for fiscal year 23 and 24. So each year, the Finance Department works with a certified public accounting firm to complete the city's annual comprehensive financial report. And usually takes about six to seven months to complete the audit and also complete the report. So for fiscal year 23, 24, the city received an unmodified opinion, and that is the best opinion that the city can get. And also, the auditor did not indicate any material weaknesses and significant deficiencies. And the next two slides, we show the city's financials at the highest level. And the statement of the net position is like the balance sheet of all the city's funds. As of June 30, 2024, the city has over $1.8 billion in net position. And the city's statement of activities is like the income statement for all the city's funds. For fiscal year 23, 24, the city has an increase of $63 million in net position. And then next, I will move to discuss about the general fund result for fiscal year 23, 24. This slide shows the general fund's revenues, the projected general fund revenues versus the actual in all the major categories. Overall, the city received around $2.4 million more actual revenue than projection. And there are several major factors contributed to this $2.4 million. First of all, the interest and use of money is higher than the projection. And this is resulted from the higher market value of the city's investments over the book value as of June 30, 2024, that we have to record based on governmental accounting standard number 31, and which we usually don't budget for it, just because we don't know how the market will be as of June 30 of every year. And the second one is the one-time measure as fund balance. It also came in higher than we originally projected. And this is due to less spending in various programs and projects we anticipated. And on the other hand, the sales tax came in lower, and this is due to the decline in the auto industry, the higher car prices, the car insurances, and also the high financing rates all negatively impacted the car sales. And then also, for the UUT also came in lower, and this is due to the UUT from the gas is lower than we anticipated from the unprecedented surge from fiscal year 22, 23. And the next slide shows the general fund expenses projected versus actuals. So overall, the actuals came in $1 million higher than projected. The salary and benefit carry came in $1 million lower than projected, while the maintenance and operation expenses came in $2 million higher than projected. And the $2 million overage from MMO was due to the carryover amount. So originally, we expected more carryover amount will be carryover from fiscal year 23, 24 to fiscal year 24, 25. But some of them actually end up being spent in fiscal year 23, 24. So the carryover amount to fiscal year 24, 25 became less. And the next slide shows our general fund reserve as of June 30, 2024, which is about $128 million, and is about 40% of our 23, 24 actual expenses. So our current reserve policy is a floor of 25% and with a target of 35%. And this has concluded my presentation. I can take some questions, or I can introduce our external auditor, Ms. Manous, to do her required communication with you for the audit remotely.
Okay, let's just do a check-in to see if there are any questions before we move on.
I have a couple of quick questions.
Okay. Councilmember Karpetian.
You mentioned the UUT. You said his users tax, it went down by almost like $2 million or so. What was the reason for it?
So in 22, 23, in the wintertime, everybody, we see a very large gas bill because the gas prices just went up a lot. So accordingly, the UUT revenue that we receive from the Southern California Gas Company also went up a lot. So for 23, 24, our consultant expected a drop that would not be so high. But actually, the drop was a lot lower than we originally projected. Just the price was a lot cheaper for the gas in the winter of 2024.
So when you say the gas, you mean the natural gas?
Yes, natural gas.
The price of natural gas dropped?
Yes.
That's why we lost like $2 million in UUT?
Yes.
Okay. The next question is Slide 8. The transfer out, what is that, the 29.6 million?
So I have to break. So the 29 million transfer out means it's general fund transferred to other funds for various reasons. For example, it included the $10 million to capital improvement fund for the Central Park, and then also $1 million for the Fremont Park, and then also about $12 million to the Measure S Capital Improvement Fund for the various housing and parks and other projects. Also, we transferred $1.5 million to the debt service fund to pay our police bonds' debt service payment. And then also some other small amount, like a $4 million to our fleet management fund. And then also $0.8 million to the building maintenance fund.
So you said the $4 million is fleet management fund?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
That's it. Any other questions?
Yeah, yes.
Councilmember Kusakian.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Brotman. So in terms of what we're seeing, as far as you mentioned that car sales have slowed, that's impacting sales tax. Is this an outlier in terms of Glendale? Have you been able to compare it to other cities that have car dealerships to see whether that trend holds across other jurisdictions? And in general, in any of these variances, do we see any trends across the region that we can look at? Or is there something that's unique to Glendale that we, as a council and as staff, should take particular note of?
If I can take that one, we can tag-team this a little bit. I think the trend that we're seeing across the region is with auto sales in general, you're seeing a reduction in the sales tax because there is a softening of that particular market, both in the new and the used. We meet with our sales tax consultants on a quarterly basis, and that remains the story quarter after quarter after quarter.
So the consultants have that knowledge from other agencies that they work with?
Correct. The other trend that we see is that our utility users tax continues to decline ever so slightly year over year. And a lot of that, while this year there was a significant impact associated with the natural gas price reductions over the previous year, there has been a consistent downward decrease in our UUTs by way of people cutting the cord, associated with cable television. A lot of people go into streaming services. Those services, as of right now, are not taxed. Or taxable, I should say, at this point. However, that is in the process.
And out of any of these trends, or any of these, what you've reported, anything particularly unique to Glendale?
No. We're seeing the same thing across the region. The only thing that is slightly unique to Glendale is a significant portion of our sales tax comes from the auto sector because of the brand of all of our cars. So that is something to keep in the back of our mind. We are somewhat dependent, more than somewhat dependent, on that particular market, consistently doing well.
Thank you. Councilmember Najarian, Mayor Asatrian, any questions?
No, I don't.
No, I'm okay.
Okay. Okay, let's continue.
Okay. Then I will introduce our external auditor, Ms. Manous, to do her required communication.
Good evening, members of the council. Again, my name is Daphne Munoz. I'm the principal at Clifton Larson Allen. And I am here tonight to present to you the results of our audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2024. First, I'm going to go over the scope of our services. We perform an audit of the annual financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2024 in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards. We also perform a federal grand expenditures audit under the uniform guidance. This is currently in process, and we expect to finish this and issue a report mid-February. And lastly, we performed and agreed upon procedures on the appropriations limit. Next slide, please. I'm going to go over our auditor's opinion. The first part of that letter is the period that is covered by our audit, which is July 1st, 2023 to June 30, 2024. We have issued an unmodified opinions for the fiscal year ended 2024. And that means that this is like the highest form of opinion that any audit can get. In layman's terms, it's a clean audit. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. Our responsibility as auditors, again, is to express opinions on the financial statements. We obtain reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance, that the financial statements are free from material misstatements because our audit is based on a test basis. And again, we perform our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. Next slide, please. Lastly, the last part of my presentation is the required communications by our professional standards. First is that the plan, scope and timing of our audit was communicated during our planning meeting and also in our engagement letter. Management is responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting policies which are described in Note 1 to the financial statements. Next slide, please. The financial statements include significant estimates for which actual results could vary from those estimates. And some of the significant estimates included in the financial statements are the required contribution, pension expense, net pension liability and related deferred outflow and flow of resources in relation to the CalPERS Pension Plan and the Part Supplementary Retirement Plan, as well as OPEB expense and the net OPEB liability and deferred outflow of resources of the OPEB plan. The CalPERS Pension Plan are based on estimates from an actuarial valuation performed by CalPERS actuary. The Part Supplementary Retirement Plan and the OPEB plan were based on actuarial valuations performed by consultants hired by the city, as well as the sick leave conversion related to the expense of liability related to the city's retiree health savings plan. Claims liabilities were also performed by actuary hired by the city. And the liability related to landfill post closure are based on estimates provided by other parties. Next slide, please. We didn't have any difficulties during our audit. We didn't have any disagreements during the course of our audit. Members of management have provided us a representation letter related to our audit that is dated November 19, 2024. And this is basically, the management is represented to us that they did not withhold any information from us that is relevant to our audit. And lastly, to our knowledge, the city did not consult with other accountants regarding any auditing or accounting matters. And that concludes my part of the presentation. I can answer questions now, and I could stay at the end of the entire presentation to answer your questions.
Okay. Any questions on this segment?
Yeah. Yes, thank you. I just wanted to ask you first, how many people worked on this audit? And how long did it take you to complete the audit?
We have a director and about two to three staff and myself that worked on this engagement. And this engagement usually takes about 500 hours, approximately 500 hours. And we started in June for interim, and we ended in November.
June through November, okay. And on page 13, when you said significant estimates reported, what does that mean?
It just means that the financial statements include significant estimates for which actual results could be different because they're estimates. And we were just required to communicate those and highlight the most significant estimates included in the financial statements.
So required contributions, OPEB expense, sick leave conversions, claims payable liabilities, liability related to landfill post closure, these are all basically the estimates that you had?
Correct. Those are estimates based on actuarial valuations, third-party valuations that the city have obtained to support that estimate.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Kusakian, questions? Any questions from Councilmembers Najarian or Mayor Asatrian?
I need better clarification on that last question Councilmember Karpetian asked.
So the financial statements report net pension liability. And to value that net pension liability, that liability is basically based on an estimate. And that estimate is based on an actuarial valuation performed by an actuary. For the CalPERS plan, that actuarial valuation is performed by an actuary hired by CalPERS. And then the other actuarial valuations for the OPEB, like the OPEB liability, for the city to report the value at June 30, 2024, they have to estimate that liability. And that liability is based on an actuarial valuation performed by actuaries hired by the city.
I have no idea what you're saying. I'm sorry. Can you bring it down to a different level where I can actually understand what you're
So at June 30, 2024, the city has to report the value of what is the liability for the other post-employment benefit plans and the pension plan. Basically, for the pension plan, that is the net unfunded liability, reporting liability in accordance to gap, a reporting gap. And for the city to value that liability, that liability is based on some estimates for which there are assumptions made by the actuaries. Because the city, the management really cannot perform that valuation by themselves. It requires specialists like the actuary to help the city value how much to report as a liability as of June 30, 2024. And that is an estimate.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Yes, Mr. Taktaian.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify a comment that I made earlier with respect to the utility users tax and how they didn't apply to streaming services. That's accurate. The utility users tax does not apply to streaming services. However, we believe that it does apply to the communications users tax, and that's something that's currently being addressed moving forward.
Thank you. Okay. We have another.
Yes, moving on. Thank you. Mary Kuramian, our Deputy Director of Finance, will cover the fiscal year 24, 25, first quarter general fund results.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'll be covering the first quarter general fund results as well as the five-year general fund forecast. So this chart here represents the general fund resources for fiscal year 24, 25. The first column that you're seeing is our adopted projection for our revenues. And the second column represents the actual revenues received as of September 30. And the second column represents the actual revenues received as of September 30th. As you can see, we are at about 9.3% of our total projected revenues received as a first quarter. This is very typical for, for this time of the year. Looking back at the past five years, for example, we have been within 9.2 to 10.9% received. So we are well within that same range for this year as well. And the reason for that is that, for example, our property taxes, we receive the large increments, right? The first one in December and then the second one comes in the spring. For our sales tax, for example, we only have one period of receipts recorded. Our UUT occupancy tax, we only have two periods. So this is very common for around this time. And based on our analysis of our revenues as well as based on some conversations we've had with our consultants, we are not proposing any amendments to our projected revenues at this time. Staff will continue monitoring the revenues. And as we get more data available to us, we will analyze that and bring back any amendments that we do have to our city council for future quarterly updates. Okay, and what you're seeing here is our fiscal year 2024, 25, general fund expenditures. The first column is our adopted budget. The second column is the revised budget, which includes the 4.3 million in budget carryovers that you previously, previously saw as part of the year-end update, as well as 1.6 million in council-approved adjustments. These are all of the resolution of appropriations that departments bring forth to city council between the months of July through September. That equals to 1.6. So together about 5.9 million in, in amendments to, to the city budget. And then the third column is our actual revenue, actual expenditures as of September 30th. So unlike revenues, we, we do try to track either at or below the 25% mark. And we are, as we should be tracking at 23.3%. So just a little below that 25%. This is our general fund five-year forecast. Since we are not proposing any amendments to our revenues, the projected revenues that you're seeing is what council saw as part of our budget adoption. So there have not been any changes made to our projection. On the appropriation side, we did include, of course, our revised budget. So the council-approved adjustments as well as our carryovers are included there. And we did project out any recurring portion of those amendments for the outer years in our projection as well, inclusive of the classification and compensation adjustments, which Ms. Adams will cover in a short bit. That is also included in our projected years for the outer years. As you can see, our reserve percentage is well within our floor of 25% with the target of 35% going all the way out to the fifth year of the forecast. However, our use of fund balance is getting larger and larger after fiscal year 26, 27. And our, our reserve percentage is diminishing and there is a downward trend. So if leaving everything at status quo, right, with our regular revenue percentage increases as well as with our appropriation, we will reach below the 25% mark at some point within the next two years. And that concludes my part of the presentation. I can stop here before moving on to.
And I think if you could go back to that five-year forecast, I want to see if there are any other questions. I know I'm going to have a question or two on this. Do you have some first?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Garpetian.
So the revenues 26, 27 and 27, 28, they're exactly the same. And every year we project about eight to 10, 12 million dollars increase. I know what the reason is, but I want public to understand why, why is it that these two years, 27, 28, there is no increase in our revenues?
Sure. So for fiscal year 27, 28, that is where our landfill host assessment fees as well as tipping fees drop off, which is about $9 million. So because there are natural increases in all of the other categories in the revenue, you don't see the revenue projection going down by 9 million because they do offset each other. So that is the reason why the revenues are staying around the same.
Okay.
It's also the first year we begin to dip into our section 115 trust to help us smooth over some of those changes.
Right. And how, how much do we have in our 116? 115. 115. I knew that.
Forty-two million.
About forty, almost 44, actually. 43.9 as of November.
Forty-four? Thank you. Thank you. That's all I have right now.
Councilmember Kasakian, anything?
I mean, the big question I have is looking at these trends, you know, how can the city address potential reserve depletion as we move forward? You know, you mentioned this outlook and it doesn't seem as though we can maintain fiscal sustainability in the long run. What is the solution to this? You mentioned us getting close to 25% reserve, which is something that, you know, I don't think, I can't remember when we had a 25, only a 25% reserve in the last 15 years. Where is end of it?
Councilmember Kasakian, excellent question. That's something that's on everybody's mind, on staff and, and me. The only two possible solutions are a new stream of revenue, steady flow of revenue into our, our city's budget. Or conversely, is cutting costs. That's the only way that we can structurally balance our budget in the outer years.
I asked that question, obviously, it's somewhat of a rhetorical question because we have sat through these budget study sessions. But I know that there are also individuals in the community, in fact, you know, a couple of individuals who called in this afternoon. Ms. Brooks who came in today and I don't, I don't know if Ms. Brooks is still here in the audience. But when we're talking about what we're trying to do to try and provide for housing for those who have the greatest need in the city, I think the comment was, well, there's always money. Or, you know, there has to be money from somewhere. And what we're seeing here on this screen is the opposite of that statement. And I'm glad that there are some of our, you know, most vocal critics in the audience still here today. I see Mr. Mohal and a few others, but I want you to listen as, to what we're listening. I'm sure you do, but there'll be a time for that when it's appropriate. But I want everyone to hear what we're hearing. Because we get asked for a lot of things. It's just, you know, we all want to have nice things. I want to have nice things for the city. But it's becoming almost impossible to figure out how we're going to pay for it.
Very true, Councilmember Kasakian. And as you may recall, last year, we brought forward a, a list of potential revenue, new revenue sources. And council settled on only less than a handful that we will bring forward individual reports for your consideration if you want to move forward in that direction.
And, and I know the landfill was a source of revenue for the city, but the landfill is not infinite. There is no such thing as an infinite pit in which we can drop trash into. At some point, it was going to shut down and, you know, whatever trash you keep, imagine hoarding trash in your own house. There's a environmental, physical, serious impact of having that trash. And I think we did the right thing by pulling off that Band-Aid when we did, voting to shut it down. That, that I do not regret. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Asatrian?
I, I made this comment to staff during the briefing, but I would like staff to. I know that this council has different items that we've talked about wanting to invest in, whether it's, you know, a park in South Glendale or looking at a center or affordable housing and so forth. But obviously recognizing that all of those things that we really want that, that meet the needs of our community require additional revenue. I think it would be helpful for the council as a whole to get both that wish list that we have that keeps growing along with the possible revenue streams. Because I think when revenue stream ideas are brought forth on their own and individually, it's easier to say no to something when you're just taking it one item at a time versus planning out how you're going to both close that gap of your reserve in years down the line, as well as how you're going to help fund some of the projects that you've been wanting to do. And so I know that there is a list of items that have been on the docket for staff to work on. I would like for that, along with some of those dream items that we've talked about or funding sources that we're looking at to come to maybe a short study session or conversation for us to, you know, start moving the ball forward on those. And not necessarily have it be something that's discussed during just a budget session, which is already heavy to begin with.
Yes, Mayor Asatrian, point well taken and moving forward when we bring reports on potential sources of revenues will, will definitely indicate what they can be used for or cannot be used for, what they can pay for.
Yeah, and, and, you know, the estimates would also be great because I think it would be, I think it's easy for folks to say, you know, the ground leases are a perfect example of that where we know that as part of the initial report that was provided to us, that would, that could potentially be an incredible source of revenue for the city, depending on what we allow to be built on there, which would still remain our lands. But again, you know, I think it's been at this point, a year and a half, two years since that item has come. And so looking, you know, how we move the ball forward on all of these items that are sitting there. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Najarian?
Yes, thank you. This is a, again, a very sobering chart that we have in front of us. And I hope that everyone in the community can take the time to look at this chart. It's, it's not extremely complicated, but it clearly shows that our expenditures are outpacing our revenues at least projected for five years. And I think after we go even further, it gets even more severe. We have to, as a council and a city, I think we have to very strictly scrutinize any project, program, proposal that is going to increase anything charged to our general fund. Because we're basically going towards that fiscal cliff. And I'm not, I don't think I'm being too dramatic here, but we're in another 10 years, I think, are at this pace. Our fund balance, our reserves, maybe even sooner, are going to be depleted. So I, as one councilman, am going to be very, very cognizant of any additional spending. I mean, spending in the community and also spending in the organization, adding positions, adding, you know, classifications, even if that means raises and collective bargaining agreements. This is something that's extremely serious that we have to, you know, face head on. And unfortunately, even in the community, there are those people that are misinformed that say, well, this transfer that we're making from GWP to the general fund is just gravy that we're, that we're taking. And let's just stop that transfer and maybe everyone's rates will go down a few notches. But for those people that, that advocate for that, we don't have the pie chart out there, but I'm sure that that come budget season, we'll have that. Close to 50% of our general fund expenditures go towards public safety. So if you want to stop the transfer, let's just get ready and cut our police and cut our fire. And that's not being dramatic. That's not, you know, hyperbole. That's really what we face. So the folks out there that are still saying, oh, well, let's stop the transfer. You don't know what you're talking about. You have no concept of how a budget is designed and you have no, especially no concept of how adversely that would affect this, this community. So, you know, we better, we better get very, very creative. And let me, let me add, and no one wants to talk about it, but back in 2015, 2016, when the city faced a similar problem, we reduced our workforce from about 2,000 down to 1,500. Something like that. Isn't that true, Mr. Golonya?
Yes, Councilmember Najarian, but it was earlier on, I believe in 2008, 2009. But you are correct. 25%.
2012, I think. It was after the financial crisis.
Yeah, 11, 12. It was a.
Ochoa. It was during Ochoa's tenure.
25% reduction in staffing, yeah.
And that's terrible. I mean, nobody wants to talk about that. We want all of our employees to feel that they're secure. They have a future with the city. But when things got tough, that's what we had to do. And of course, that puts an extra burden on the remaining employees. City services just don't poof disappear. It just called for more productivity from those remaining. So it's a tough situation. I think we have to really take a, a strong look at fiscal prudency. And, you know, the last resort for me is seeking other finances, other taxes. Because we're getting, you know, we're getting the hell taxed out of us in California. And I certainly don't want the city to be part of that. But those are, obviously, those are some very difficult issues that we're going to have to face in the years to come. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If I, if I could just add one?
Sure, please.
I think this is a good opportunity for me to also remind about. We were supposed to have a plan in place to bring in some grant writers for the city. You know, I think just about a month ago, I had requested a breakdown of annually how much we even spend on consultants and so forth. That we could potentially be getting different funding from different agencies to cover. I'd really like to see some sort of plan, not just hiring outside grant writers, but bringing some on board that will do the work internally. Because you get one grant, the, the staff member already gets paid and is covered through that amount and can generate a lot of additional grants and money for our city. And so, Mr. Golonyan, I guess this is my plea to you to, for us to look at that. And then also look at, you know, how we can, if there's ways for us to cut down on the consulting services that I keep bringing up time and again.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Asatrian. As I have noted, that's on my list of things we need to accomplish. We do have consulting services that apply for grants. The challenge is, and I, and I am advocate of creating a grant writing team. But with that comes, as, as you heard, as you've seen the five-year forecast, comes the cost of the salaries and benefits as long as we keep those employees on, on board. But we, there has to be a balance of how much they can bring in. And obviously it has to be a long-term plan as opposed to one or two grants. So it's in the works on amongst many, many other things that we are trying to accomplish.
Okay. All right. I'm still waiting to make mine, but please go ahead.
Go ahead. Then I can go after you. Go ahead. Yeah.
Okay. So I, I'll sing the same tune basically. But let me ask a question first. The, I, I could see here, and I hope everybody that's looking at this sees that our next budget cycle, which will start in, we generally start in April or so.
Budget, yeah, budget review process starts.
It's in April and.
As far as the teams and the departments are concerned, they're going to start next month.
They're starting now.
March, April. Yeah, you're right.
Okay, it comes to us and we start doing the study sessions in, in March, April, and then we adopt our next budget at the end of June. And our upcoming budget, the 25, 26, will probably be comfortable. But the next year after that, which is really just around the corner, is going to be. the corner, is going to be, you know, unless things change, but right now, it looks like we'll start to dip into reserves, because our expenditures will exceed our revenues. And then it continues, and it accelerates year after year, as we've seen. We start pulling from this Section 115 trust, which, for people that don't know, was, is money we've set aside to pay for our pension liabilities. Fortunately, we did that, that'll give us a little bit of breathing room. But I guess my question is, when do we project that we will breach that 25% kind of minimum? I know it's not a legal threshold, but it's our practice, is, is that we don't want to be below 25% of our general fund budget held as reserves. Do, when, when roughly do we think that happens?
Sure. So if all of the factors stay as they are currently, and this is without really reviewing, right, the detailed revenues, as well as on expenditure side, if, let's say, everything is tracking as is currently, we would be going below 25% in '30, '31.
'30, '31, okay. And then we just continue to descend there, and we'll get, eventually we'll get to zero, probably a few years out. And basically, this is a function of increasing pension obligations, I think, by and large. Is that a fair statement?
Amongst other things, yeah, but majority of it, yes.
Okay, that's why I said by and large, yeah.
But I want to qualify that, because at some point in the mid-2030s, based on the actuarial analysis, you do see the peak begin to come down. So it's not that the pension liabilities will continue to go up forever and ever. Post-implementation of PEPRA in 2013, we were beginning to see the effects of that legislation, and how it's beginning to positively impact what those liabilities are doing.
Right, right. So that's, that's a fair point. So for the next 10 years, we're, we're going to have a rocky road.
Correct, and that's exactly why we timed our, our balance in the Section 115 trust with the amount that we're drawing out on an annual basis, to help us get over that hump, over a nine-and-a-half, nine, nine-to-10-year period.
And so I, I guess my request is, as we go into our next budget cycle, I hope we can have an honest conversation about new revenues or service cuts, because I think there's maybe a perception, I'm hearing it a little bit here, that we can tweak things around the edges, don't give such big increases to salaries, and maybe cut a few, you know, consulting costs. That's not going to do it. Our, our general fund budget, 63%, I think is the number of our general fund budget, goes to police and fire. And our next item is looking at increasing our, the number of our officers, which would kick that up to over 65%. So a very large percentage of our general fund budget is going to, to public safety. And most of that is the cost of the people. And the rest of our budget is also mostly the cost of our people. It's people that are doing park maintenance, it's people that are running our libraries, it's people that are doing permit approvals, it's people that are doing business development, housing, and all those things, all those services that we all rely on. And a 25% cut in our employee staffing is going to mean a really serious impact on the services that we provide to the community. So we have to be honest, I think, that there are going to be some very tough decisions. This is not going to be just something we can squeak our way through. Now, there are some new revenues that we discussed that have less of a bite than others. Most, you know, most new taxes, somebody's paying for, right? But I do know that we have discussed rezoning, and there's some resistance to that. We've discussed some of these large parking lots that we have that can be developed into housing. We can earn, we can earn rents from leasing those properties out. That would provide housing, as well as provide a revenue source to the city. I think that is a really strong win-win, but there will be people opposed to that, as, as there are when there's new development. But apart from that, there's really not a whole hell of a lot out there that is not going to impinge on somebody in some way. So we're going to have to have that discussion, and we did have that discussion, and what happened on this council, and it was frustrating to me, is that basically every item of any significance was taken off the table. And if we're going to just start taking everything off the table, then we really need to face up to what cuts we're going to make, and be honest about it. And we need to do that in this next budget cycle, and not wait. Everybody wants to wait, no politician wants to be the one to raise a tax or cut a service, but here we are, and we have to deal with it, and we have to be honest. And I have to say, I haven't seen a lot of that in the past, and I think that's why we are where we are on a lot of things. Waste rates, utilities, all these things that past councils have basically pushed down the road, and we're now facing reality. So I hope that my colleagues will be willing to step up and look at things that are going to be uncomfortable, but they are necessary. Thank you. And with that... Oh, you had another comment?
Yes, yes, sorry. Yes, I'd just like to make a clarification. The question that I asked for '26-'27 budget and '27-'28 budget, it wasn't referring to that, I regret the decision on the landfill. I don't want to get 200 phone calls tomorrow from the Glenlock Scanning people and say, "You don't want to close the landfill." We, we had an agreement, it's, it's, the year is '27-'28, and that will be done. I just wanted to make sure, because I get, I got this question from a few people, I want to make sure that they hear it from staff, not only from me, that the reason, what was the reason that the revenue was flat? And I remember our budget forecasts from 2018, 19, or 2020, that we always had five-year forecasts. It was way different than what we have here for, like, this year or next year. It was, it looked a lot worse than what we have today. These items will change. The one in '28-'29, this is a, this is an estimate, it will change. It will, there will be differences between what we have today and when we get to that point. I remember that when Scott Ochoa was here, our worst year was '25-'26 in that five-year forecast, because of the revenues that we had at that time, and the five years down the road, based on the revenues, it was the worst year ever. But look at it this year, yes, we are, we are in 2.4 million positive, basically, and we are in, in black. And our budget went from 850 million, or what have you, to $1.2 billion. So of course, our expenses has increased as well, but we can manage our budget. I think it's all about how to manage our budget, right, to, not to have this, this taxes or other, other measures that many people are against, but yet, how our cake can eat it too, basically. And I, in the last few months, I've been taking notes of the reports that we had, the consulting contracts that we had. Of course, we need, we need consulting, consultants in many of the things that we do. And the projects that we've done, and it didn't make any sense, and it's like millions of dollars. I think we need to look back into our last year's expenditures, and I agree with Mayor, Mayor Satrian, to look at the, and I asked the same, for the same thing, on, on consulting services that we, we received, and the cost of the consulting services, and see which ones we, we really needed, and which ones we obtained it, but not them filed. And that, that, that is like, I promise you, is millions of dollars of projects that we've done. I don't want to just single out one project versus the other, this is a budget thing, we're not debating anything else here today. But I think we need to look into our expenditure and see where we can cut on services that we need, but we get just to know, oh, well, we got this, but we don't need it today, let's put it on a shelf, and look, revisit it in the future. Again, our budget went up by $350 million since a few years ago. I think we can find a way of managing it, the way that... We, we, we can keep many people happy. Of course, you can't keep everyone happy, but I think we can, we can keep our employees and, and also balance our budget.
Okay. So we move on to compensation. We'll do, at the end of the presentations, we'll do comments, yes.
So, good evening, Mayor Protim Brotman, and members of the city council. This part of the report is regarding classification and compensation alignment, where we review these matters annually. Just by way of a little background, when we lean into the fall, we ask department heads where they're having challenges with recruitment and retention, where they believe there should be some alignments within their departments. We also receive from the GMA and the GCEA matters that they would like to put forward, items that they would like to see aligned. In one of the unions, they're allowed by their MOU to put for, put forth 12 requests, the GCEA 10. And we look at what the department heads submit, we see if there's any overlap with what the unions are asking for. We look at our recruitment and examination report to see where we are having challenges with recruiting and filling vacancies. And then we look at our comparable cities, we see what they are, how they are compensating their personnel, and make some recommendations. In this report, you see that we are proposing 19 positions across eight departments, and they are below our comparable averages, and so we seek to adjust them. You can see that the eight departments spans in community development, city attorney, city treasurer, Glendale Water and Power, HR, IT, police, public works, and we have one executive level position in the GWP. Next slide, please. There are also 19 classifications across seven departments, where we are proposing to add new classifications. We do want to underscore, there are seven departments, but within these departments, each of them, with the exception of one of the positions, 18 of them, we've asked for the department to give us a vacancy, that we will repurpose into these 19 positions that we're asking for. There's one exception, and that's in the fire department, and we're not asking them to repurpose, because they have one sworn person that they're asking to civilianize that position. Again, across seven departments, you see them listed there, and those are the 19 new classifications that we are asking for. Next slide. We are also seeking to permanently remove 52 obsolete job classifications, where we have also collaborated with our department heads, and have determined that some other classification more appropriately represents the functions associated with the positions. These positions have remained vacant for quite a while at this point, and so they will not be backfilled, they're obsolete, and we're asking to permanently remove them. This list of 52 is not all obsolete classifications, there are at least maybe 100 more. We just did not have enough time to ensure that we are not inadvertently removing a career ladder from someone, so we want to take a little bit more time and look at the others over the next 12 months, and we hope to return to you for further consideration. Next slide. So the total cost of what we're asking for this evening is $240,000, but we want to remind the council that these asks are budget neutral. All of the funding can be absorbed within the budgets that the departments already have, so there is no new appropriation that we're asking for. With the one public safety to civilian position, there is a prorated cost of $50,000 that can be absorbed within the fire department. With the other 18 positions, the total cost for the remaining of the fiscal year is $190,000. Again, it's a budget, budget-neutral item, because the cost can be absorbed within the respective budgets. The proposed actions describe, they do impact three bargaining units that we are required to meet and confer with, and we have had those meetings and had those sessions. The positions impact the GMA, the GCEA, and the IBW bargaining units, and also, we mentioned one executive level position that is not represented. So that concludes this portion of the presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, let's get our questions on this, and then we're going to go to the speakers, because I know we have some people that have been waiting. So just questions at this point? Councilmembers have had to.
So, the 52 obsolete classifications that you mentioned, what happens to these positions? You take those 52 out, and you explained it, I just didn't understand it clearly. So that, within that 52 positions, what happens to these positions, and do we have employees there, they're, they're moving into other positions, or these are vacant positions that we are eliminating? Just a quick clarification, please.
So all of these 52 are vacant, they have been vacant for some time. The class specifications that were originally put forward, according to the department heads and conferring with the bargaining groups, those duties are no longer needed within our city, and some instances, departments have evolved, and they have other personnel performing certain functions. In other areas, the functions no longer exist, due to maybe IT, leveraging IT solutions and things of that nature. But the positions are all vacant.
Councilmembers, I want to make a clarification. These are not necessarily vacant, they're unfilled positions.
Unfilled positions, potatoes, potatoes.
No, they're, they're not positions, so the title goes away, nobody loses their job, or...
That's all I was asking, if they're, they're, they're unfilled positions, so...
Unfilled positions.
But there, those positions are going away, correct?
Yes.
So the, the budget that we had for these unfilled positions, what happens to them? We had, we, I'm, I'm sure we, every year, we budget for the positions that are not, you always said vacant positions, but it's unfilled positions. What, what happens to that budget? It stays within our general budget, or what happens to it?
I'll have to have the budget manager answer.
Sure, let me, let me answer that. I want to make a distinction between an unfilled position and a vacant position. In the way that we use that nomenclature in this organization, a vacant position oftentimes is a budgeted, funded position in a department budget that just doesn't have a body in it. It's authorized, it's in the headcount, we just haven't recruited for that position. I think maybe even using the term unfilled position might not even be accurate in this particular situation. I think what we're referring to are just classifications. These are titles in the city's roster that, at this point, have become obsolete. So not only are they not funded, they're not in a department budget, there's nobody that holds that title. We simply don't need those, those classifications anymore.
I understand. Now, now, I, I understand. Yeah, because... Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I have right now.
Any other questions? Councilmember Kusakian? Mayor Satrian?
If councilmember Kusakian wants to go first, I have a lot of questions.
No, I, I said I don't have any, I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, so how many positions were requested total for salary adjustment?
68, Mayor Satrian.
68, and how many are we approving today?
19.
The, we're approving the salary, we're doing a salary adjustment for that title itself, right? So it could be that there's several staff members that are within that same, so it's not necessarily 19 positions that are getting the salary increase, it's the, the individuals that hold those 19 titles. Am I correct in that? Am I correct in that?
Mayor Satrin, let me make a clarification. My apologies, 38 that were approved, 19 were for new positions with no person in those positions currently, and the other 19 are being recommended for adjustments. Some of these classifications currently, positions, don't have a person, incumbents in those positions, and some do, depending from anywhere from one to six staff members in a given classification or position.
So how much of an annual increase would we be expecting? And what would be the long-term impacts of these increases? I mean, we just went through pensions and salary adjustments and so forth, as we're talking about our budget. I recognize that you said $190,000 for the remaining of 24, 25?
Correct, the fiscal year, yes.
So annually, how much would that be?
Ms. Karamya?
So it's going to be about almost $500,000. That will be inclusive of the fire position that's being added. Without the fire position, it's about 300 or so, $300,000 annually that's been added to our forecast. However, that cost only includes the positions that are filled currently. So if we do have vacant positions that will be filled later on, that's not included in this cost.
Correct. So if every single one of these positions were filled, we're looking at a $500,000 annual impact, that was already accounted for in the five-year forecast.
Exactly.
Okay, and then with respect to your process, so the ones that you came to an agreement with, they're based on the ones that the bargaining units and the requests aligned? Or are there ones that are not, that were not part of that? And how is the decision made to which ones to go with? Are they based on like council priorities? Are they, what is the methodology here?
Well, there are, thank you for the question, there are a few factors. We do look for overlap with what the bargaining units are asking for and the department heads. We also look at where the vacancies are, where department heads are actively seeking to fill their positions. Today, we have 209 vacancies. We have 51 in the pipeline that are in some stage of the recruitment and selection process. We have strong partnerships with all of our department heads, so we hear from them regularly where they're having recruitment challenges. There are a number of vacancies in a couple of our departments where the department head has put forth a staged approach to filling them, and you see some of that represented here. There are others who made asks more than a year ago, and they were asked to defer their requests until this year, and so those were given a little bit more of a priority. In departments where there's one vacancy and we don't see a recruitment or retention issue, we're not giving that as much weight. We're working very, very closely with our Glendale Water and Power. They do have recruitment issues. We've gone out on a number of different recruitments for them, so we're very, we pay very close attention with them. Over the last 12-month cycle, we have worked very hard with our police department and our community development department to fill their vacancies. So we look at where the vacancy rates are, we look at turnover. If you can recall, we reported to the council that we wanted to see a downward trend in these last 12 months in employee turnover, and we have seen that come to fruition. We're now at 6.26% in turnover, where we were north of 11% last year. So all of those factors play a role. We try and collect as much data as we can before we go to our bargaining units, so we can talk about the data. And after we've reached agreements with those units, then we go and we speak with the city manager and his designee, and we talk through it. Many times, the work plan that all departments are working on and have items on, we're looking at that to see where departments may need additional resources in order to check some of those work plan items off. So there are several factors that go into our thought process as we work through this, but we cannot, the city cannot make salary adjustments without meeting and conferring with the unions. That is part of the process, and so there does have to be agreement with them before the city manager and his team makes the final decisions to come before you.
And Mayor Satrin, just to reiterate what Ms. Adams mentioned and a couple of other things, justifications that are brought forward include a number of things, but my decision primarily is based on operational necessity, difficulty or challenges in recruiting and retention of talent, the competitive nature of the market we're in, and the ones that weren't approved this year, they weren't totally rejected, but they're deferred for future consideration when we go through this exercise again next year. Oh, I'm sorry. I also have to mention there are situations where we have to fix salary compaction between two classifications in the same series.
Okay, and so how does the internal process work with each of the department heads and how that work plan is communicated? So say, I don't know, Public Works gave, put in a request for 10, you've landed with 3. What's the process like for communicating that you've selected those three and the methodology behind them, and what's deferred and what's not?
I normally...
Because I don't know how many have put in the request for.
Well, as I noted earlier, Mayor Satrin, there were 68 requests that were submitted. 38 were approved, and based on the nature of the justification, the strength of the justification, and its, you know, competing interest between departments, I have to consider, be prudent about our financial standing, as you saw. Easiest way, easiest thing would be just to go ahead and approve every single request, but based on the factors that I mentioned earlier, we landed on 38 to move forward, and that gets communicated to the department heads.
Okay, so at this point, like HR has communicated, or you have communicated with all of the departments that have put in a request for funding as to the methodology used and the work plan for the requests, and how they can help consolidate, or why they're not getting the adjustment?
I have not communicated with all department heads. I have standing meetings with most, and in those meetings, I do regularly communicate where we stand, what's being approved, what's likely to be supported by the unions. So no, I have not met with all of the department heads.
And to add to that, we needed to wait to recommend these adjustments to council for approval before we communicate that with the departments.
Okay, I mean, I would think that as, you know, if I was working with my team, I think there should be better communication on all fronts on the reasons, not after the fact, but so everyone feels like they're all on the same page. And, you know, I don't know how many each department requested and what they got, but I think that communication and direct communication is really important.
I have communicated individually with certain department heads that had submitted positions. Again, that's pending approval of our recommendation to council and to have the final list, but there has been communication, assistant city manager has with certain department heads, I have, so maybe not in a written format, but there has been communication.
And are there departments that have requested funding but did not receive anything, adjustments or justifications?
Yes.
Okay, and which are those?
At the top of my head, the city clerk's office.
I'm also seeing the library and arts doesn't have anything on the, on any of the adjustments and requests.
That particular department did not submit any positions.
Okay, were there others that didn't?
Well, there were several departments where I had to inform them that some of their requests would likely be denied. There were some in the community development department, the city manager, I already mentioned, the city clerk, the city treasurer, finance department, the IT department, public works department, management services.
Management services in my own office, yes.
Police department. So all of those departments, I had to let them know that some of their requests would not be going forward.
Okay. All right.
Mayor, do you have much more? I'm unfortunately going to have to take a recess. I was hoping to do it at the end of this because none of us can go to the bathroom until we, because there are only three of us here. But no, I'd like to go to the end of this item, hear the speakers, and then take a brief recess if possible.
I mean, I would like the time to ask the questions that I have, Mr. Brotman, if you'd like to take a recess.
How much more time do you have?
Is the five-minute clock running?
Since when? I kind of like being on this side.
Let's get through it, just please know that we're, we're feeling the pressure.
All right, why don't we take the...
No, no, let's get through it.
Why don't we take the questions, and if I have additional questions, I'll ask. But I know there's speakers.
Okay, okay, thank you. We'll take the public comments now. And we have, you said, we have three people here in the chambers?
We have three cards and one caller.
Okay.
Our first public comment is by Alan Durham.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Brotman, members of the council, thank you for letting me speak. I'm Alan Durham. I just wanted to express appreciation that the council, again this year, sees the projections for, particularly for '27, '28, '29, and realizes that if they are accurate, they're not going to be sustainable going forward. It shows increasing drawdown of our general fund reserve. If we don't reverse this trend, our fund reserve will be completely depleted at some point, and revenues are just not growing as fast as expenditures, and this is in addition to our massive pension liability unfunded. Cities can and do go bankrupt, and that's something we need to avoid at all costs. So let's not let this become a fiscal crisis with that kind of potential outcome. And please keep, you know, these projections in mind. They come up annually, every year, when the five-year forecast is discussed, but I don't really see them being cited very much when individual expenditure proposals come up, particularly ones that don't seem to be focused on the most pressing needs of the community, public safety, parks, you know, libraries, other, you know, roads, you know, services that really the residents expect. And, you know, it would be nice to have money for everything, but, you know, some of these projects have not been really crucial or necessary. And some of these consultant studies seem to, as council member Garpetian says, just got noted and filed, so why do them if they're not really going to result in anything beneficial to the city? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is by Mike Mohill.
My name is Mike Mohill. Thank you, Alan Durham, for your comments. Yes, we have an expense problem, not a revenue problem. So is that why you want to go ahead and put in bike lanes on North Bran Boulevard? And then you want to continue on Locker Center Avenue? Those bike lanes should all, those bike lanes should all be canceled now. We can't afford bike lanes in the city of Glendale. They're millions of dollars. Cancel the consultants. That's, that's the expense we don't need. It's not a revenue, it's an expense problem. And Councilman Kasakian, Brotman, and city, what's your name? Our city mayor, Satrin, I'm sorry. You all voted for the, you all wanted bike lanes, and you want to expand it for 20 years. We don't have money for bike lanes. It's a luxury that we cannot afford, especially when you're raising our electric and our water rates to fix the utilities. Another comment I have over here. We ought to reduce the workforce. I see that item 8C tonight. Does council want to go ahead and have staff to help you guys out? As it is, you're working only three weeks a year, three weeks a month, not four. That's a reduction in staff time. Why don't you work four, why don't you work every week for four weeks, not only three times? So you don't need any reduced revenue, okay? Why don't we go ahead and promote Bran Boulevard cars, the Galleria, and the Americana? Those are all revenue-producing. Why don't we join those companies and put our stamp with it and advertise on TV? Come to Glendale, buy your cars here. Come to Glendale, buy your, your, back-to-school clothes. Come to Glendale, buy your Christmas presents. Come to Glendale. We can use that money that we're spending on the bike lanes to promote the city to have revenue. We need revenue, we don't need more expenses. So every time you want to have another bike lane, Mr. Brotman and your group, think about the people who are paying more money for their electric and water bills, because you went ahead and you convinced your council colleagues that, hey, we have to promote the Green New Deal. But the Green New Deal is costing this city millions of dollars because of your leadership, Mr. Brotman. That's why, that's how you got the nickname Dictator Dan. Thank you.
Our next public comment is by Mike Borisov.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Borisov. Some context, I'm a four-year student at UC San Diego. I study public policy and urban studies and planning. So this is not the first time a city has faced this position with a fiscal shortfall, a deficit, what have you. So we actually can increase revenue without increasing taxes or cutting city services or projects that we desperately need. That would be by building more housing, specifically more dense housing. We're not the first city to do this, to think about this. The city of San Diego does this, Minneapolis successfully did this, the city of Austin did this successfully. And so really what this means is when you build more dense housing, people live in your city. And so really what this means is when you build more dense housing, people live in your city, right? They spend money in that city. Employers hire people in your city. Especially mixed-use development. You may have a cafe downstairs, maybe a hotel on top next to apartments. That really does revitalize the city. And don't take my word for it. You can search yourself on Google. You can ask your staff who have worked here and are very smart in these type of subjects. Cities don't run on single-family homes. They don't run on urban sprawl. They run on dense urban living. And essentially, when you expand the city, have urban sprawl, have single-family homes, you unfortunately do run the risk of squeezing the budget because you're building more sewage pipelines, more roads, and that is really expensive. But when you're densifying a city, when you're having more people live there, you're having more revitalization on the street, what that means. That means you have things like the Americana, right? You have more people shopping at the Galleria. People who live in your city usually spend their tax dollars in their city. You gain tax dollars from the city that they live in. So just to bring up a point, sales tax. Can you imagine the millions of sales tax increases you can get if people just live here more? Let's say 20K, 50K, not 400K, not 200K extra. I'm not saying we should do that or we shouldn't. But 50K, that's a lot of people that spend money here. Property taxes. People pay property taxes from their single-family homes, their condos, but also commercial entities. You have more small businesses, they pay rent towards the city. They have to buy the land, of course, to develop. This is one way to get out of your deficit that you're seeing, the shortfall that you're seeing here. It's a very easy thing to do in terms of policy change. You simply vote on it. You rezone the city. It's not politically popular in many times, but you can do a three-pronged approach here. You increase revenues from the city. You also adjust the housing crisis. The reason we have a state affordability crisis in the state of California is because we don't build housing. We haven't built housing for decades that we should have. And states like Texas are building housing and we're losing residents to them. So we'll be decreasing the cost of housing, increasing city revenue, and making a more walkable city. The reason people like the Americana is because it's walkable, because there are shops downstairs, there's apartments upstairs. We should do that for the rest of the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have one caller. We have Herbert Milano on air. Herbert, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much, City Council. The request for an increase of 23% in police staffing and an additional $15 million in annual cost is not only not affordable for Glendale's budget, but it will also increase significantly the long-term pension obligations. There is no documentation on this proposal that recognizes that long-term obligation.
Wait, is he?
The council should postpone this decision for additional reasons. The analysis as presented to support this increase has false and misleading information.
Mr. Milano?
Yes?
Can you hear me? Yeah, you're speaking on the next item. I'm sorry, we, you probably got confused. You're speaking on 8B, I believe, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, if we could just hold you, we're still on 8A, we will come to you.
All right, great, thanks.
And you'll get your three minutes over. Okay. We have no other speakers?
We do not have any other speakers.
Okay. We have a number of motions to consider here. Do we have any final comments from my colleagues before we move to the motions and the resolution?
I have a technical question from staff. I know that we cannot receive the agenda before it's published, basically, right? But presentations like this, is it part of that 72-hour window?
No, Councilmember Garpadian.
Yeah, because, I mean, this item, it was easier. We could just ask the questions and absorb everything and digest it. But some of the items, like maybe some of the next items, or in the future, if the presentation is ready, maybe we get it this week and its agenda is for a week later or so. So we will have, or two weeks later. So we will have enough time to go through the presentation and ask questions during our briefings and be more prepared when we come to the dice, basically, to the meeting. I know there is a 72-hour rule, and I wasn't sure that if presentation like this is part of that 72-hour rule that if it's not published, you cannot provide it to us.
Councilmember Garpadian, the presentation, slide decks, get prepared after the staff reports finished. And they use the contents of the staff reports to put in the presentation. You're asking that we do the presentation packet first before the
I'm asking for the items that, some of the items are like this item on the agenda, for the council members to have enough time to read it and ask questions during our briefings. Because you get this on Friday afternoon, then it's the Saturday and Sunday, then Monday we have briefings. It's tough to catch up with everything, basically. Sometimes our agendas are lighter, many times are heavier. So this is just a technical question. If possible, I think we need to look into that option for the upcoming, you know, year. And so we will be more prepared when we come. I mean, personally, I'm speaking only for myself, but
Understood, that's a good point. And we endeavor to try to publish the agenda on a Wednesday, the latest Thursday, not Fridays. We hardly ever nowadays publish on Friday. But we'll do our best, as you noted, with so many items on the agenda, it becomes extremely difficult trying to push them forward when it has to go through a number of reviews through my office, through the city attorney's office, through budget. But we try, staff tries their best to have it published earlier than Friday. Like I said, we intend to publish on Wednesday. Sometimes it happens on Thursdays, but it's very challenging.
No, I understand that. But this is not published on Wednesday or Thursday, right?
Right, but that's done after the staff reports are completed. We don't publish those. And I try to send them out to council in advance. Lately, we've been lagging a little bit because of all the stuff that was going on. But I, again, those presentations, I do send them in advance to council.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any comments on this agenda?
I mean, I would, my comments are actually similar to Councilmember Garpadian's. But I think for me, I'm having a difficult time with this because I'm trying to understand, like, which positions were not approved when we are doing these increases? You know, what scale is it based on? And these are, you know, I would have loved to see, you know, what the breakdown is of what cities are we being, you know, are we comparing to for these salary increases that we're putting in and approving today? And all of those things require more than, you know, the ability to ask the question on Monday. And I know that even for this item, I had specifically asked that my briefing be done late last week. And then I got a fever, so I couldn't join. But I've made the same comments when it's come to our budget session. But I think anything that deals with, like, financial statements and increases, I am once again putting in the request that we get this information early. So then I'm comfortable making the decision that I'm making. That's all.
Okay. Any others? City Clerk, Dr. Abadjan, I understand you have a comment.
I do have a comment. I have a written comment that I'd like to read to council. Mayor Satya and Mayor Protem Brotman and council members, I'm here to request that the adjustment of the salary scale for the Assistant City Clerk be included in this action item today to reflect the average salary scale of Assistant City Clerks in neighboring cities. This is an adjustment of 8.92%. I have raised concerns regarding the salary scale for the Assistant City Clerk position consistently over the past 2.5 years. Currently, the Assistant City Clerk's top salary is not only significantly below the compensation for similar positions in neighboring cities such as South Pasadena, Pasadena, and Burbank, but also similar positions within the city of Glendale. This salary gap puts us at a disadvantage in retaining and attracting qualified professionals, which directly impacts the operational continuity and efficiency of my office, as it also impacts other positions that are supervised by the Assistant City Clerk. The lack of action on this issue not only creates a disparity in compensation, but it also negatively impacts staff morale in the City Clerk's office. This makes it more difficult to create a positive work environment and ensure that our team members feel valued and motivated. Inaction on this will ultimately impact the work that the citizens of Glendale elected me to do. I respectfully urge the council to consider this and amend the proposed motion on this agenda item to include the requested salary adjustment for the Assistant City Clerk position. This adjustment is essential for fairness, operational efficiency, and the long-term success of the City Clerk's office. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Okay. Any comment on any of that? I mean, it seems
Mayor Protem Brotman, Member of the City Council. The City Clerk had sent me the exact memo. I had prepared a response in writing. It was, I had every, I think it's in my outbox. I was going to send it, but I didn't get a chance. My position stands, as I noted. Of all the 68 requests, that wasn't the only one that is not being recommended for approval tonight. And I don't see any additional justification that would change my mind at this point.
Okay. Let's, I mean, we've got a number of motions. Is there anybody who's prepared to make a motion at this point?
Let me just say that, given the size and the amount of positions that we are having to go through now, and in full disclosure, I know that some of my colleagues had briefings. I didn't necessarily have the time to sit down with staff to do a briefing. I find it difficult, in light of the presentation that preceded this about the budget, for me to commit to any type of approval of additional fund expenditures. I know it's part of a number of the items before us in the agenda today. But when we're talking about staff and the work being done, you know, we have great needs in this city. We have a lot of things that I think the community agrees over the years we've faltered in, whether it's as a council in giving the direction to staff and finding the resources to do it, or whether it's just simply looking around the city as to the things that our community expects in terms of quality of life. You know, giving additional quote-unquote salary adjustments in light of an economy that is uncertain right now, I am not prepared to do.
Well, let me ask Mr. City Manager. Is it possible that we hold 8A, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 to our January 7th meeting, giving all of us time to reflect on this more, ask all the questions that need to be asked, and act on the first three, on the CAFR and the other items?
Mayor Protem Brotman, you certainly can do that if you like. I'll add that on January 7th, Councilmember Najarian will not be in attendance. He'll be out of town, so you're not going to have full council. There are certain positions on this item that have a compaction issue within the series that we need to fix. There is an item on there for the position of the General Manager of GWP that we're currently recruiting for. It's in the final stages. And that recommendation of that salary is what it will take to have a well-qualified person, candidate, in that position compared to the cities of Burbank and Pasadena. It's on par with those positions. And ultimately, really, the recommendation is the city manager's duty and responsibility to bring forward to council as to what's necessary for the efficient operation of our departments. I respect that you have these questions, are valid questions. But ultimately, it's the city manager's recommendations. But if you want to postpone it, we'll have to postpone it.
Okay, well, let's see if we have motions and seconds. If we have a majority, we'll go forward.
Let me just also add that, in terms of, you know, if there are a couple of absolutely critical items that you wish to have us approve this evening, such as the hiring or a salary related to the hiring of a General Manager of Water and Power, that is something that I would be willing to consider. But in, again, in light of the presentation regarding the city's financial future and the current budget and where we are and where we perceive ourselves to be, when we look at, you know, I hear what my colleagues have to say, whether it's Councilmember Garpadian and others saying that, well, you know, we need to be better with our budget. We need to be more, you know, we have to be smarter with how we spend our money. Certainly, I don't know if this aligns with those views because these are recurring costs. When we raise salaries, it is not something, it is not a grant that we receive. It is not one-time funding for a project within the city or a capital improvement. This is a recurring cost. Staffing is costs that we absorb, that we have to pay for year after year, along with the increases when there is negotiations with the bargaining units in the city to be able to give raises. And then we and taxpayers and the entire city is on the hook for figuring out ways to how we can pay for that in the long run.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we need to make everything personal, but this
Garpadian, this is the third time you say about making it personal. I understand that, but you start, you preface all your comments with
It is my time.
I understand that.
It is my time.
Then start it without saying it's being
It is my time. I didn't interrupt you when you were speaking. So please extend the same courtesy to all of our colleagues and everyone else here. I think there's a lot of work that was put into this item. We need to vote on it. Everyone is concerned about the budget, all of us, including the staff and the management and all the directors. But as it was mentioned, this is part of the current budget that we have. We are not increasing, every department is paying within their own budget. And it's $190,000. It's a lot of money, but it's part of within the departments that they're paying for. It's not that we're going out and creating new positions, hiring new people that we don't need. I think we need to move forward. I don't know what's going to change from today until January 7th. We need to make a decision and move forward. I think, I'm ready to vote, and we'll go from there.
Yeah.
Ask someone, Brotman?
Yes, Mayor Satya.
So as I noted earlier, I have additional questions. I would be happy to move forward with the Glendale Water and Power item, but I'm not ready to move forward with any of the others.
Okay, well, let's do this. Let's break this up first, and let's deal with motions for 8A, 1, 2, and 3, which hopefully are not controversial. Can we get those across the line? This is simply Yeah, okay, so you're moving Mayor Satya, 8A, 1, 2, and 3. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Let's first have a roll call on these three items.
Mayor Protem Brotman?
Yes.
Councilmember Garpadian?
Yes.
Katsakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asta Darian?
Yes.
Okay. Now, let's see if we have a motion and a second and a majority for 8A, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. I just would like to say one thing. I mean, from my perspective, I think staff did a lot of work identifying the positions that really need adjustment. I think turnover, I mean, we're a service organization. We need to have people that are going to be dedicated and who are going to stick with us. Turnover is very expensive, and recruitment is very expensive. So I'm going to trust the work of the, of staff in that these are all very important adjustments, and I will support them if there's a motion and a second.
I'll make that motion.
And Mr. Katsakian, you had something to say.
It's all right. Apparently, anything I say may be taken as being personal.
No, I mean, when you name me, when you name me every time by name, I never mention any of my colleagues by name in any of my comments.
Now we're going to have to hit the gavel.
I apologize to everyone, but I never mention anyone's name in my comments, never. But you always do it every week.
Let's take it offline.
Go back and take a look at the tapes. That's all, that's all. Let's end the year
Let's end the year in a positive, unhappy note.
I'm happy too, but I want to also be accurate about the math. And I think that when one of my colleagues or any colleague says that, you know, these are positions that are already in the budget, it's been budgeted, that doesn't take into account that those positions that are in the budget are going to have salary increases and pension increases associated with them. And that is not in the budget right now, but it will be when it comes back for approvals, for raises and increases and future adjustments. So, I think that we need to be honest and accurate about what we are saying. I have the same concerns that my colleague whom I respect has, who I will not specifically name. But we do have to be prudent about...and it's not that we won't approve all of these. It's not that we won't approve any of these, but we have to be looking at this surgically, approaching this with a scalpel, and being very methodical in what the positions are and how they align with the council's goals and the community's expectations. That is all. Thank you.
I agree with you. With that, I move 8, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8.
Okay. And will there be a second?
Well, Councilmember Brodmann, or Mayor Protem Brodmann, I would actually like to vote on the...in favor of the classifications. But...and I will take this opportunity to note that I've always been a big supporter of paying people well and holding them accountable so you can recruit and retain best of the best. But I also feel like I'm doing a lot of this blindly today, and so that is the only reason why I'm not moving forward with the...I will not be supporting the salary adjustments. But I do want to support the reclassification, so can we take that item separately?
Is that something that can be done easily?
Not easily, because they're part of the same resolutions.
Let me first see if there's a second.
Yeah, classification titles and compensations are tied.
Okay. Let's see if there's a second for this item, which would come from Councilmember Najarian, if he...
No, Mr. Brodmann, you know, I am not ready to move forward on this. The way...the first thing to do to get out of a hole is to stop digging, and I'm not convinced...I did not hear a strong statement from our city manager indicating this was absolutely necessary, scrub down all the other requests, and I'm not confident to move forward to approve any of these raises until such time as I do get that strong assurance from the city manager and maybe finance that these are absolutely necessary, and I just can't...in light of what we just saw, I just can't. Like Mr...like my other colleague said, he can't do it in good faith.
Okay. So, with that...
I don't quote your name, Mr. Kasakian, but only in a good way.
With that, can we find a way to approve the GWP Director position or classification? Because I know we're in an active recruitment, and that's time-critical.
I think that one can be separated out of staff. But I think that's 8A8. I could be wrong, though, so...
Can we check on that quickly?
It is, and Ms. Adams is nodding her head, so that one...
Because if we can knock that one off, 8A8, and we can, I guess...I'll give you a chance to speak in just a second, but we could potentially come back on November's...on...sorry, January 7th with the others, giving us all time to maybe do a little bit more digging. Is that...
Mayor Protem, just to reiterate, on January 7th, Councilmember Najarian will not be here.
Okay.
So, this has to be delayed to January 14th.
Well, we might have enough to do it on the 7th. Let's...we'll see.
Okay. But in response to Councilmember Najarian's comment, I have to state my position. If I didn't believe that these 38 positions were absolute...absolutely necessary for retention, for recruitment, for addressing compaction issues, I will have approved the whole list of 68 submittals that came to my desk, to my office. I picked and choose the ones that I absolutely believe at this point need these adjustments. Otherwise, I wouldn't have brought it forward. Otherwise, I would have just brought the entire 68. That would be irresponsible of me.
Okay.
In light of the five-year forecast that we just all had heart attacks over.
Okay.
No, is that true? I mean, in light of that forecast...
I didn't really have a heart attack. I didn't have a heart attack.
I mean, we've seen the five-year forecast several times before.
Yes, you've seen the five-year forecast. It's already baked in.
I understand that, but rarely...it's a rare occurrence where we get the five-year forecast and we get an immediate request for increase in salaries. And I make a statement such as...
I disagree. My apologies for interrupting Councilmember Najarian. I disagree with every end-of-the-year, five-year...not five-year forecast, but our budget update, quarterly budget update, we do have class and comps included in those reports.
Well, let's do this. I really want to move the meeting forward. Can we get a motion and a second on 8A8? At least take that one off the table. That's the GWP.
I'll move 8A8.
Okay. We have a motion for 8A8. Do we have a second?
Wait, wait, wait. It's only for GWP, right?
That's what I'm told.
Yes, that's correct.
Can I get confirmation?
It's for the executive-level appointment or executive-level salary adjustments, only for that position.
It's only for that position.
Okay.
So, is that a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay. Let's have a roll call, 8A8.
Mayor Protem Brodmann.
Yes.
Councilmembers Garpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Astaterian.
Yes.
Okay. And I will pass the gavel and second 8A4, 5, 6, and 7.
Can I ask one question? Quick, thank you. Quick question on that regards, because that five-year forecast that we had, some years are really, really tough, but is this increase built into those five-year forecasts?
Councilmember Garpetian?
It's not going to be added to it. It's already built into it.
Already accounted for in the five-year forecast.
Every department is paying within their own budget, basically. I don't want to come across like I'm advocating for all the salary increases and everything, but this is a small item compared to our budget, and I don't want it to make it look like that it's the doomsday, and we are not. We can't move things around to keep our good employees, and we all talk about it, and, you know, retention is a tough, tough issue for us. So, we have a motion and a second, right?
Councilmember Brodmann, if you're doing a motion and a second and it doesn't pass...
Yeah, that was exactly what I was going to ask. Yes, yes.
Then that would mean that we can't just continue it to the 14th, correct?
That is...is that correct?
Correct, although you can ask for a reconsideration of the item and then have it then continued.
Okay. Let me, since I am Mayor Protem, I think I'm going to make the executive decision that we'll hold it over till January, rather than vote, have it fail, and have to do a reconsideration. I still believe we can schedule for the 7th. If we don't have four votes, if we don't have three votes on the 7th, we'll move it to the 14th.
I'm not sure if Councilmember Najarian would like to be part of that meeting or not.
Okay. Well, let's have that discussion apart from this meeting, and a decision can be made between staff and the mayor and Councilmember Najarian on scheduling that, okay? But for now, we will continue it. All good?
No further actions necessary unless there's a contrary motion, so...
Okay. Is there anything...any objection? I'm continuing these items. All right. Thank you. Okay. So, now we're on 8B.
Did you want to take a recess, Councilmember?
Yes, yes, a five-minute recess. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the reminder.
Are we back?
Mayor, we are live. Mayor Protam, we are live.
Okay, so we are back and would you kindly read item 8B into the record, please?
Sure. Item 8B, Police Department Regarding Project 301: Motion to Adopt Police Department Project 300, Adding 52 Sworn Personnel and the Corresponding Fleet and Equipment Necessary to Perform Their Duties. Two: Resolution of Appropriation. Three: Motion to Increase the Citywide Authorized Salary Position Count by 23 sworn positions for Phase 1.
Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Protam-Brotman, of the City Council. Our Police Department's Project 300 is a strategic plan. It's an initiative to address the growing demands of our community on our police force and as a result of increases in population growth, commercial and residential developments, as well as public safety challenges. This proposed plan is to right-size the department, the sworn staffing in the department, but in three distinct and separate phases to maintain Glendale's high safety standards and to maintain our optimal response time and improve public safety. With that, I'll turn it over to Chief Sid for the presentation. Obviously, as you can imagine, there is a cost impact to this proposed plan, and Mr. Takhtalian will cover the impact, and you'll see a new five-year forecast based on the proposal.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor Protam, Mayor and Council members. A pleasure to be with you all. I want to start by, in light of the comments and the discussion that's been going on, and I just preface my, what I hope will be a brief presentation to you all by saying that as your police chief, as a member of the Police Department, a department head, I take, you know, any request that come before council incredibly serious and weigh them versus performing my job, making sure that the Police Department has the resources to perform their job, but understand that every request, no matter how small or large, particularly when it comes at a fiscal impact, that I take that incredibly serious. And, you know, it's not lost on me, the cost of staff and everything else. And again, in light of the conversation that's been going on the previous, throughout the night, I just think it's important that you understand that. That said, I do feel that it's my job to give the council a real snapshot of where the organization is, the resources I think that they need, and the challenges that it's facing in light of those resources. So, as the City Manager touched on, let me start by saying, and I think it's important to lead with this, that the city of Glendale continues to be one of the safest mid-sized cities in the country. And that's a reputation of exceptional public safety service while remaining one of the leanest organizations in our region. While that is certainly a point of pride for us as an organization, I'm here to tell you that it is not a sustainable model for our Police Department, not for our staff, not for the level of safety and services that we have come to expect here in our community, especially given the growth of our city and the associated challenges that have accompanied that growth. The Police Department's Project 300 Strategic Staffing Initiative aims to address the growing demands of a rapidly evolving community. Over the past two decades, the city has experienced significant increases in population growth, commercial and residential developments, and associated heightened public safety challenges. Having trouble with the PowerPoint. There we go. Thank you. Associated with those challenges, there accompanying growth are things like rising crime rates, not just in our city but across the region, traffic safety issues, quality of life concerns, and the complexities of things like homelessness, mental health-related issues, as well as an increasing number of major events in and around our community. As the City Manager touched on, Project 300 proposes to right-size the organization by staffing and adding 52 sworn positions over the course of three phases over several years to maintain Glendale's high safety standards, ensure we preserve an optimal response time, ensure our ability to effectively address growing safety concerns, and improve public safety and confidence through high-visibility policing and directed strategic enforcement. So, let me start by just talking a little bit about, I mentioned the growth of the city. And just taking a look at it, I think everyone in this chamber knows it as well or better than I do. The city has grown, and over the last 20 years or so, we've seen a population growth of about 5%, residential population growth of about 5% as well as commercial and retail growth. You look at our downtown, things like our dining, our shopping, our nightlife, luxury residential going up. We maintain one of the busiest malls with the Galleria in the region, and of course, the development and the onset of the Americana. It's worth mentioning that over that same time period over the last 20 years, while the city has grown, both population and other development, the size of the Police Department has decreased by 7%. Case in point, about 15 years ago, when the Americana came online, this Police Department was significantly bigger than it is today, 15 years later after it has been here. So, simply stated, Glendale has become a destination city for all the reasons that we know that we're proud of. But with that comes associated workload, and I want to talk a little bit about that. So, as I mentioned, the growth and development of our city is accompanied by increased workload, and that naturally creates public safety challenges. Beginning with an increase in calls for service and crime rates. Notable rise in crime has occurred throughout our country, throughout our region. We're no exception to that in areas of violent crime, residential burglaries, thefts, and associated quality-of-life issues. As I mentioned, since the construction of the Americana, calls for service in that immediate area around the Americana have gone up 27%. Again, all adding to an increased workload for the Police Department. Traffic safety. It remains a top priority. I know for this council, it's the number one. It always pops up as a top priority for our residents here in our community, and it's certainly a priority for us as a Police Department. This is a city that on any given day sees anywhere between half a million to a million cars pass through it. And we know it, we all experience it. And with that comes an increased and growing demand for directed traffic enforcement, particularly around areas like our schools, our downtown area, speeding, whether it's on Glen Oaks or in other spots of our city. And again, that's a growing workload that continues to tax our resources. Moving along, quality-of-life issues. And this is one of those things that I think has grown and changed over the last 15, 20 years, both for our Police Department and our profession, is some of the different challenges that Police Departments face today that they may not have seen a decade or two ago. Things around school safety, acts of violence in our workplace. We look at some of the unique challenges that things like social media and cyber threats present to us, internet crimes against children, things that even a decade ago were just not a part of the workload for a Police Department the way they are today. Threat assessment, whether it's in our workplace, whether it's at schools, whether it's around the large events that happen in our city, both the preparation, the monitoring, and the response to those types of, be it quality-of-life issues or threat assessments, cyber threats, analysis, so on and so forth, again, continue to add to that workload. And while I won't dive too deep into it, again, along the lines of quality-of-life issues when we talk about things like homelessness and mental health challenges that have just become a part of policing any city in any part of this country, again, associated workload that comes with that. Emergency management and large-scale events. We continue to have many of the events that we love and have been a part of the fabric of this community for a long time. But as time goes on, we're having more events, and those events are growing in size. And those take, again, planning, preparation, and staffing, as well as some of the other things that we're going to see come to the region over the next few years, be it World Cup happening in Pasadena, Super Bowl at SoFi, and the Olympics that are going to come as close as the Rose Bowl here in the years to come. You all know the Real-Time Intelligence Center just got up off the ground a couple months ago, having great successes with it. But as I've mentioned before, while it is making us more effective and efficient at policing the city, it comes with an added workload because we are observing and seeing more issues, more crime, and/or more quality-of-life issues than we might have seen even a year ago. So in short, to kind of sum it all up, for our GPD staff, the workload has become more heavy and complex, and I would say more so than it ever has before. So a quick snapshot of what our staffing looks like today. Currently, GPD is comprised of 248 sworn police officers. That is what we are allocated in the budget. I am incredibly proud to say, both with the support of this council, the City Manager, and the hard work of the people of the Police Department, for the first time and I think a lot of years, our Police Department is essentially fully staffed as of today. Granted, that does include 11 new police officers that are currently in field training, out, again, with a field training officer in the field training program, as well as 16 new police officer recruits that are currently in some stage of the academy and that will be graduating as early as January and as late as April over the next few months. So, we have hired, with the support of HR, again, and all of you, 37 police officers over the last 18 months. We have crawled out of a pretty significant staffing hole that we found ourselves in just the last couple of years. One of the matrices that we used to look at, you know, I've talked a lot about workload. The other part that I think is an important matrix to look at when we're talking about the staffing and size of a given Police Department is its residential population versus the amount of officers we have. As I mentioned earlier, our population, well, our Police Department is one of the leanest that you will find in the region. We maintain a ratio of 1.2 officers per thousand residents. When you look and compare that to some of our neighboring agencies, Burbank, 1.5 officers per thousand resident. Pasadena, 1.7 per thousand residents. Santa Monica, 2.5. City of Los Angeles, which, you know, shares about half our city's border, 2.3. Even the national average for cities our size, mid-sized cities across the country is 1.6 per thousand residents. That only takes into consideration our nighttime population, our residents. Doesn't necessarily take into consideration our daytime swell that on any given day could take it to 250,000, 300,000 during the day with our residents, our workforces, and the visitors that come. And I mentioned the amount of traffic that we come through with, sometimes as many as a million cars a day that come through our city. So Project 300, and essentially, the requests and the recommendations that I'm putting forth before all of you all, would look at adding 52 sworn positions, hence taking us to 300 total. That would break up to 43 officers, seven sergeants, and two lieutenants. That would drive that ratio that I just talked about to 1.5, making us the same as our neighboring city of Burbank, still leaner than our other neighboring city of Pasadena. Also, in that request are some additional vehicles and equipment, basic things like black-and-white patrol vehicles, traffic motorcycles, as well as some pretty standard-issue police officer gear, body-worn cameras, tasers, protective gear, things of that nature. So what would that look like if and when we were to adopt the plan and ultimately get to that place of 300? Where would those positions, where would they be assigned? So roughly a third of those 52 positions would be to increase our patrol size. The men and women that you see out in black and whites every day, increasing the visible presence around the city. An important part of not only maintaining really great response times, but increasing our visible presence around this community to deter crime, to be able to be proactive in going out and making arrests, again, deterring crime in our city. One of the things that would be a part of this growth would be creating a sixth policing district. You kind of look on the PowerPoint there, you could see the map. That middle district, that downtown district, would become its own. And what that would essentially do, because that is the highest-density area of our city and the greatest workload for us in the way of calls for service, is that our current five districts, oftentimes, the officers that are assigned to those get pulled into downtown because of the volume of calls, leaving many parts, other parts of the city unpatrolled, if you will, or with extended response times. Adding the patrol force, adding this sixth district would be able to, again, deal with the increased workload, particularly in that downtown area, and allow the units that are typically assigned to those other five districts around the city to stay in those districts so that they can be close by for calls for service and to maintain a good response time and a visible presence in those areas. One of the examples of where this has become a challenge, for instance, if you look on the map there, District 4, Emerald Isle, and some of those places back in the canyon that for parts of the last year have had challenges with residential burglaries. Oftentimes, those District 4 cars get pulled into the center of the city because that's the highest volume of calls. The canyon doesn't always generate a high volume of calls, so it pulls them away from that area from being visible as a deterrent. And that when a call for service does come out, like a burglary alarm, the response to that area sometimes can be delayed. We don't have a substation in the canyon, and that has been a challenge and something that has come up during some of our community meetings with folks in that area. So about a third of that 52 staff would be assigned to patrol. Again, men and women that you'll see out on the street. The next third, roughly, would be significantly increasing our traffic bureau. As I touched on, it remains a top priority for us, both as a city, for our residents, for this council. We would look to almost double the size of our traffic bureau with more traffic officers and motor officers, being able to, again, do the directed enforcement that we want them doing, whether it's speed enforcement on Glen Oaks, dealing with the challenges in and around our schools, and all of the little hotspots, areas that we contend with now, where we are oftentimes kind of chasing our tail and playing that whack-a-mole, trying to be present but not being able to have that consistent presence that we just talked about at council about a week ago. This would significantly help us improve and increase that. And then the last third of staff of that 52 would kind of be broken up into some of these three unique areas. One of them would be to grow our special enforcement team. This is kind of a special problems unit that we use out in the field and patrol to deal with crime trends, be it residential burglaries, all the way through to gang enforcement, whether it's around gang activity, tagging and vandalism, some of the things that oftentimes are associated with the gangs. This unit would grow, and it would allow us to keep a consistent touch in enforcement in and around those challenges. School resource officers. As I speak today, we have one school resource officer for our fairly large GUSD district. This would allow us to grow it to a place where we would ultimately have an SRO assigned to every high school and every middle school in our city, which is obviously incredibly important, not only for a presence, not only for response, but for just some of the daily challenges and issues that our SRO works through with the administration at the given schools. It's a significant workload. And then last, to add a handful of positions into our investigative services or our detectives, the caseload for our investigative units has significantly gone up, probably in the ballpark of 30-plus percent with the amount of cases that we are seeing go through. And what we are oftentimes seeing is, naturally, our staff, our detectives, are having to prioritize which cases that they're going to do follow-up because they can't work them all. They don't have the bandwidth to complete that. So we're having to be selective with that. Adding some staff there would allow us to be not only more effective and efficient, but to be able to grow, again, our bandwidth and be able to cover and further investigate and more thoroughly investigate more of the caseload that comes through. I mentioned a three-phased approach. This is for a few different reasons. Number one, understanding that there's a significant financial impact that comes with adding police officers at any number, and that's not lost on me. So the idea here is to break this up over three phases and to accomplish it over a few, several years to work towards that direction. The second part is hiring. And while we have done a phenomenal job of hiring and getting out of a pretty significant hole, even if you gave me 52 positions tonight, those aren't getting hired in the next couple of years. That's not reality. So to break them up and to hire them over the course of several years. And then lastly, to also allow me and the Police Department in these different phases that as we approve different phases, to be able to come back before council and the City Manager and really show, from a data-driven standpoint and otherwise, the impacts that that's having and the wins and the successes and where we're seeing and how that's looking, and making an assessment of what that need is in Phase 2, in Phase 3, and how much is it needed? And maybe we get to a point where we feel comfortable with where we are. So, three-phased approach. Phase 1 being 23 sworn personnel at a price of roughly 5.7 million, with another $1 million associated towards vehicle and equipment. Phase 2, 16 sworn personnel at 4.4 million, vehicles and equipment, another 630,000. And then Phase 3, 13 sworn personnel at 3.3 and about another 600K in vehicles and equipment. So with a total over the 52 positions and the vehicles and equipment at about 15.8. I tried to whizz through that and give it a real kind of high level. Obviously, available for any questions that you might have, but you obviously have the resolutions and the motions in front of you. But looking for your consideration of Project 300 and, you know, adopting this initiative and tackling it as a plan over the long term. Hoping for a consideration of a resolution of appropriation and to start with Phase 1 and to grow our count by 23 sworn positions, again, to get kicked off with Phase 1, but available for any questions that you might have.
Okay. I assume there are going to be a few questions, so.
Mayor Protam, Member of City Council, would you like to ask Chief Sid the questions first? Or would you like to see the impact this proposal has on the five-year forecast? And then ask your questions.
Let's, either way, let's see the five-year forecast, perhaps.
Just give us a moment until we can get the presentation up.
So while that presentation is being brought up, can we ask one question?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Sid. Now, you showed the comparisons to neighboring cities which have a better resident-to-officer ratio than Glendale does. But despite having that and having smaller populations than Glendale, both cities have higher crime rates than Glendale does. We are a larger city with lower police officer-to-citizen, or resident, I rather, I should say, ratio, yet we do remarkably better in a number of areas. So what do you attribute that to? And how does that, those statistics comport with the proposals and assumptions in your report?
Councilmember Kusakian, I appreciate the question, and you are right on. And that's something that I, you know, hold with a great deal of pride that we have, you know, I would say, significant enough better crime rates in both our neighboring cities, all three of our neighboring cities. And I think that's for a handful of reasons. I think that starts with everything from support of our elected officials for public safety. I think it's the hard work of the men and women of the Police Department, as well as the people in this community that support their public safety agencies. My significant concern with that is, is there's a different expectation for public safety in Glendale than there is, quite frankly, in Burbank, in Pasadena, and the city of LA, whether it's response time, low crime rates. And one of the challenges and things that I am seeing, statistically speaking, is while at a different, at a different level, crime has been rising in our city over the last five-plus years. Things like robberies, you look back to 2019, we're seeing twice as many. We've dealt with significant bouts with residential burglaries. You know, 2023 was high across the board for us in most crime categories. Happy to say that 2024, and I think it's no coincidence as we've started to slowly crawl ourselves out of this staffing hole, it has helped kind of curve that and flatten it out. And we are slightly down from where we were in 2024, I'm sorry, in 2023. But if you compare us back to where we were in 2019, we are significantly higher in most categories than where we were. And while certainly look at our neighboring agencies for some comparison, I think the standard of both living and safety that we experience here and that we expect here, I really look to compare us more to ourselves, more so than I do. You know, if we ever get to a place where we're, you know, in the same category of some of those cities next to us as far as crime rates, then, you know, we're failing and I'm failing.
Okay, we're going to look at the numbers?
Sure, thank you. Do you like the bearer of bad news here? Do you like the bearer of bad news here with five-year projections all over the place? But none of this is intended to take anything away from the chief's presentation. It goes without saying that the need in our community absolutely exists. It's just a matter of making these decisions eyes wide open. I won't dwell too much on this first particular slide because we spent quite a bit of time discussing it when we were talking about the first quarter budget update. But what you're looking at is if we were to, this is our starting point. This is assuming that we haven't adopted and implemented any phase of Project 300. The following three slides will reflect Phase One implementation, at some point, Phase Two implementation in 27, 28, and Phase Three implementation in 28, 29. And I would draw your attention to, can you order the next slide, please? I would just draw your attention to that blue row as well as the very bottom ending reserve, both in dollars and/or percentages. So this particular slide reflects what would happen if we adopted Phase One as of tonight, which would mean that we would have six months' worth of appropriation this year, as well as 12 months of appropriation next year for the full implementation of 23 particular positions, sworn positions, as well as the equipment. As you can see in the previous slide, our reserve ending balances. Can you go back? First one, please. As you can see, our reserve balance in 28, 29, prior to implementation of Phase One is about 30.6%. With implementation of just Phase One, your reserves go down to about 23%. That's essentially a $6 million, $5.8 million expense that reoccurs every year and increases just based on the soft costs moving forward. If we were to assume implementation of Phase Two, and that's a big if, I think that the chief has talked about the fact that once Phase One is implemented, we would reassess and we would determine whether or not we have to move into the next phases. But if we were to move into those next phases, there's a significant cost associated with it. And again, if you draw your attention to that middle row, it's about 11.1 million dollars a year, and it continues to deplete your reserve balances all the way down to about 19%. And if you implemented Phase Three over in 28, 29, that just reduces your reserve balance down to 17%, and it's a downward trend. It goes from 37.6% all the way down to 17%. And barring any new revenue enhancements in the city's general fund budget, there is, there would be absolutely no way to do a full implementation of Phases Two and Three as it stands today. No amount of savings or reductions in our budget would be able to accommodate that level of impact. That's not necessarily the case with Phase One. I think that that really comes down to a policy decision of this council based on the community's need.
Okay, thank you. Perhaps would my colleagues mind if we went and heard from the public first, and then we can come back with questions and comments that we have? Dr. Bajian, do we have?
We have one caller.
Okay, let's hear from Mr. Milano, I think, right? Yeah, let's hear from Mr. Milano.
We actually have a card as well. Alan Durham.
Oh, okay.
Mayor Protem Brodmann, members of the council, thank you for letting me speak. I'm Alan Durham. I'd like to first thank Chief Sid and our entire police department for this presentation and doing such a great job for Glendale residents in general. Glendale is going to continue to grow, particularly with state-mandated bonus density projects. The Twin Towers at 610 North Brand will add almost 900 one- and two-bedroom apartments alone. Then there's the potential, I assume, redevelopment of the old Sears building site, which I've forgotten how many units that's proposed to be. But it doesn't seem reasonable to grow our population and maintain a static police presence or force. We're adding so many new residential units, ADUs are popping up all over the place. I mean, I don't know how much the city is going to grow in population, but it's definitely going to grow. Public safety's always been the bedrock of Glendale, and I don't think we can afford to let it deteriorate. I'm not necessarily saying it will if we don't have Project 300, but I think council needs to be open to continually assessing the staffing needs for the police department vis-à-vis our crime statistics and our growing population. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one caller. Our caller is Herbert Milano. Herbert, you on air, you have three minutes.
I'm Mayor Protem, members of the city council. My name is Herbert Milano. It is not easy to make a presentation that challenges the police department or police department growth. Despite my appreciation for Chief Sid and his staff, we do have another point of view with regard to the statistics and the justification that was given to us in the executive summary. And I'm using the executive summary given to you as the formal reason for this particular 23% increase in staffing that adds $50 million in annual city costs, but has no documentation with regard to the impact of the pension obligation, and is huge. I think that this council should postpone this decision for other reasons as well, and is that much of the information in the executive summary is false, there's information that's missing, and there's misleading information. It states that the population has increased in the last 20 years. That's not true. It was 198,000 20 years ago. It is lower by 10,000 residents today. It states that we have fewer sworn officers than we did 20 years ago, but it's also not reflected in the financial statements in the statistical section. We have 237 sworn officers in 2004, and we have 244 in 2023. It also presents a false comparison, the resident-to-police ratio. A high-crime city needs a higher police-to-population ratio. Glendale is not a high-crime city. The demographics of a city gives us a significant amount of information with regard to how much policing is really needed. It fails also, this particular report fails to project the long-term impact of the pension and post-employment obligations. There's also something very significant as well in that there is, there are no performance outcome improvements expected out of these additional increments, increases in expenditure and resources. I would expect that you say, if you increase by 10 additional police officers in traffic, the following result would occur. We have no promises of any improvements, no expected key performance indicators, as many cities do today. City budget is in a precarious situation, and were it not for the COVID relief fund received in prior years, the city would be in a very difficult financial situation today. So were it not for federal money and federal borrowing, we would have been in a very serious situation financially today. But most importantly, additional staffing should have clear objectives of improvement on key performance indicator, and this proposal has none. The analysis that supports this action has false and misleading information and therefore should be avoided. And maybe the chief should come back with a more detailed information as to exactly how these particular resources would be applied and how the outcomes would be measured. It's not that I'm against.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all? That's all we have?
Yes, that's all.
Okay, let's go to questions from my colleagues. You want to start here?
I can start, yeah, thank you. So, chief, currently we have 248 sworn police officers?
That's what we're budgeted, budget allocation, yes, 248.
No, but how many are on duty today?
Well, we have hired for all 248, but as I was mentioning earlier, 11 of those just started the field training program, so they're on the streets, but they're in training. And then we have 16 in the police academy, so they're not even here, they're at the LA Sheriff's Academy getting trained up. So I guess you subtract those, and that's what, that's what we have on the street today.
Okay, so that 37, which were police officers that were hired in last 18 months, are they, they're not part, they are part of these 248?
Yes, sir, they are.
Okay, so that's, therefore, we need 52, and you mentioned 15. Two new police officers, this 37 is part of that 248. And if we add on the Phase One, it was 23, right?
Yes, sir.
So if we add 23 in Phase One, that will make it to 248.
271.
23, 271, which is 1.4?
Just short of, about 1.37 or so.
Per thousand, basically.
Yes, sir.
So that would be a good, it would be very comparable, kind of comparable to our neighboring cities, basically. Close to them.
Yes.
Burbank and Pasadena.
I think an important kind of just note to add to that, too, is that will get us back to just about where the height of this organization was under Chief Adams, I believe, when I think the height we reached was about 268 or 269. So it kind of gets us head back above water, if you will, from where we were.
And, thank you, chief. I have a couple of questions from staff. Our five-year forecast, the one that, the one that we discussed already, not the one including the Phase One, or even the Phase One, are we, have we considered the upcoming contract negotiations with our associations? Within like every three years, we have new negotiations with our different associations that we have. Is that part of this five-year forecast or not?
Councilmember Garpetian, the current MOUs that we have in place are part of this forecast. Not sure if we have plugged in anything for the future.
We do have a slight inflator in the future years. I'm not at liberty to say what that number is, but it's extremely modest, just because we do know that at some point we will likely be looking at some sort of a negotiation once these contracts are over. But again, it is an extremely modest number, and if it's anything like what the negotiations were this year, those numbers would absolutely change.
Because I think one thing we need to consider as well within our budget as to, when we budget for this, this plan, basically, as we have to understand, how many more contracts do we have that we have to negotiate within the next five years? Is it two more contracts, three more contracts? Because my understanding was that we negotiate every three years, basically, our contracts are three, sometimes, not very often, four years contracts, but four-year contracts. But I want to understand as well, I don't know when will be the right time to find out what will be added to this red numbers, the negative numbers regarding of this plan as part of the budget or not. So I think that's something that's important. And also, first two years, maybe even the three-year, is digestible within our budget because our budgets change up and down. But the fifth year, which is $15.5 million instead of nine, that's something that we need to understand from today, how are we going to budget that, basically? How are we going to fund that $15 million? Excuse me. And chief, one more question for you. How many years do you think will take? How long would it take for our Phase One to be completed, hired, filled, on the streets within our budget? Because we have to understand that as well.
Yeah, Councilmember Garpetian, I would say in the most optimal of circumstances, two years, probably realistically closer to two and a half to three before you start to actually experience that, you know, recruitment, the hiring process, as I described, academy field training, somewhere between two to three years. Again, two being optimal, closer to three probably more realistic to see all that, because we also have to keep in mind that while 23 more positions are approved over the next year or two, as I'm, as we're working to fill those, we're going to have attrition. People will retire, we'll lose some people in separation, what have you. So it's not just hiring 23, it's probably hiring more like 30 or 35 over these next two to three years. So I hope that answers your question. It'd probably be close, somewhere between two to three years.
Right, I just wanted to know the impact on the budget that's coming this immediate next year, or it's going to be like two or three years down the road?
Yeah, I think, you know, and myself, the assistant city manager, have talked about it, I think more realistically, it's probably two to three years down the road. Is that fair?
Correct. Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Councilmember Kasakian?
Sure, thank you. So, looking at these numbers and looking at the impact that has on the budget, I think it would have been great to have this, I guess, presentation in tandem with the previous one because we're seeing, again, the real situation that we're facing, both council and taxpayers, the community, the residents. With that, we are also increasing increased demand for public safety services. Everywhere one goes in the city, everyone they talk to, you hear about it, you hear about it all over Los Angeles County, and certainly Glendale's not immune to it. In your presentation, what I appreciate is that you emphasized the increase in the traffic bureau from the outset, because even with the discussions we had here in these chambers last week and all over the city, we hear about the speeding lead-footed drivers throughout the city, creating an impact, people who are speeding through residential neighborhoods. And I do also want to thank you for making school resource officers a part of this. I would be only supportive of this if that was the top-tier priority. I think given in light of not just the recent events in the news, but numerous events that we hear about throughout the country. It was most recently, I think, stated that there have been 83 school-site shootings just in the last year alone throughout the country. I want to make sure that we have school resource officers in all of our high schools as we once did in this city. I remember we had school resource officers when I was a student. So having said everything that I've said, and there's much more I can add to it, for instance, I would have liked a more holistic approach that takes into consideration not just arresting anyone who's violating the law, but how we prosecute those who are arrested. I was one of the individuals on this diocese that brought up the issue that as long as the DA was not doing prosecutions of certain misdemeanors, that we could possibly take on that role. However, we've had a change in the district attorney's office, so we'll take a wait-and-see approach. Hopefully, your office is communicating directly with the new DA, and some of the state law changes will hopefully have an impact as well. But my question is, how specifically will the Glendale Police Department measure the success of this project in reducing crime rates and improving public safety over time? Do you have specific measures and statistics that you're going to focus on? And then the second question I have, and this has been asked of me, and I promised residents in the community, I said, I've brought this up, we've talked about this issue, I've made this request, I've received an answer. But because I think individuals in our community oftentimes come into council meetings and out depending on what issue interests them, and especially, we're going to hear, I'm sure, about the improvements we're going to make to the roads, bike lanes, whatever else, the question always comes up, why can't we be more strict on people who have, are guilty of moving violations, people who speed? What can the city do in terms of increasing fines on those who violate these laws, who break the law, just within Glendale's borders? So how do you make a speeding ticket more punitive? How do you make the moving violations more severe in Glendale in order to prevent the bad behavior that we're seeing? I understand our hands are tied by the state and the vehicle code, but I'd like to know from you, it doesn't have to be tonight, I'm not expecting you to answer that portion of it, but I would like to know how you hope to measure the success of this project and at later time perhaps answer that question as to what we're capable of doing and what we're limited in.
I appreciate the question, starting with, you know, the metrics in which we're going to use to measure things. You know, to start at the top of the list, the obvious, crime rates, right? And one of the things that I do with staff that we've incorporated over the last year is a more data-driven approach to how we do, or how we deploy our staff based on stats in crime data. And, you know, one of the metrics that I've been looking at is, again, not necessarily month-to-month and year-to-year, but where are we at in comparison to where we were four or five years ago? So I'll start with crime rates is one way to measure it. Another way, because both in my professional opinion, as well as I believe studies have shown, one of the ways that we deter crime is a consistent visible presence of police officers. Our patrol staffing has been significantly short for the last few years, and I believe that that tends to have a direct correlation with some of the to have a direct correlation with some of the surges in crime that we see. So one of the things that we will be looking at is how quickly and how consistently can we stay fully staffed and patrolled? Because that tells me that we are keeping a consistent visible presence out in the community, and then monitoring that, again, from a data-driven approach. Another thing we're going to look at is our productivity. And I'm really proud of the fact that we have police officers here, regardless of our staffing, that consistently outproduced our neighboring agencies, whether it's in traffic citations, whether it's in arrests. And in 2022 and 2023, we saw that productivity take a significant dip. Happy to say that 2024, it is on the rise across all measures. So as we add staff, it's my expectation that that productivity, whether we're talking about arrest, felony misdemeanor, traffic citations, so on and so forth, that productivity continues to rise. So we'll look at it from a bunch of different measures. And then, while it's not, you know, it's more anecdotal, I think sometimes the best information we get is from our community members. And whether it's through public surveys, whether it's attending community meetings, you know, when we talk about safety, data is an important part of it, but the perception of safety is just as much as important of that. And it's important to me that the people in this community, whether it's in their home, or walking downtown, or shopping at the Americana, feel safe. So, you know, the kind of feedback that we get from our community members, much like you touched on, what does that look like? And I want to see that feeling and that perception around worries and concerns change, that that confidence rises. So again, a holistic approach.
Yeah, and I'm glad you used the holistic because that's what I was going to cap my comments off with, that in addition to what the traditional crime statistics analytics are that you'll be using, I appreciate and have studied a bit about Chief Bratton's work in New York City, who took the broken window approach, which is, you know, the small things matter. And here in Glendale, they certainly do. Because when we see increased graffiti, when we see increased dumping of trash in certain areas, that can oftentimes track with some of the behavior that escalates, where it does become a noticeable statistic. So hopefully, you will work with, if we approve this, and I would like us to do a little bit more of an analysis. I know you've been kind enough to bring us a phase one, a phase two, and a phase three, but I think that some of us may have sticker shock here. I would like to know what your your gold standard, silver standard, and bronze standard are of how you can move forward, because we do need more staffing in public safety. The question is how we are able to absorb the cost of it. And hopefully, there's some wiggle room there. But we need to have that broken window approach here in Glendale as well, because, again, it really does make an impact when there is visibility, as you mentioned, and the public sees our public safety personnel, who this city appreciates greatly out there in the public sphere.
Councilmember, I couldn't agree with you more. I probably hear some of my staff even slightly chuckling in the crowd because I talk about the broken window steering, and it's something I believe in, subscribe to, the idea of no call too small. And when we look at, you know, those metrics, you know, seeing misdemeanor crimes and the amount of arrests we make go up, because I know that the more of those that we make, the reality is that we are deterring us having to be at a place where we're making felony arrests in that way. So, yeah, to your point, whether we're talking about illegal camping or drug abuse out in the streets and illegal drug possession, all the way through to vandalism, those small things, and allowing us to be at a place where we have enough staff that we are not always being totally responsive and reactive, that we can actually go out there and be proactive, which is part of the culture of this organization for a long time. The additional staff also allows us to do that, to go out there and not always just be in a place where we only have enough staff to go to call, to call, to call, but that they can handle the calls and also have some discretionary time to go out there and proactively, with a broken windows theory approach, go out there and impact some of those quality of life issues and beyond. So I agreed.
Okay. Mayor Satrian?
Sure. Thank you, Chief. I know this is something that we had requested for you to bring forth when we're doing our budget assessments. You know, I think on the previous item, I kind of yelled out, and I don't know if the public heard me, but I think when Councilmember Najarian was saying he was having a heart attack, where everyone was having a heart attack, I said, I'm not having a heart attack. And the reason I'm not having a heart attack, with all due respect to our finance staff, is because when I, I've said this for the last two years, when you go back and look, you know, reports that have been provided and projections that have been provided, the next year looks great, and then it's doomsday that follows after. And so I think, for me, I am interested in moving forward, recognizing that we do need additional staffing. And I know what that can do to our current staff if they're burned out, especially in such an intensive field. But this is also my opportunity to bring up to maybe Mr. Glanion and to the chiefs, and even our Community Development Director, on, I have time and again raised us bringing forth development impact fees specifically for public safety. Many very large residential projects that are coming up, and I don't want us to lose on the opportunity. And if we're talking about how we're helping close this gap for a need that we have, whether it's for our police today or fire tomorrow, I, you know, I, us approving this today and then looking at these numbers, we also have to look at, again, how we're helping close that gap. And that can be one of the many ways that we do that. I know that the city of Los Angeles has different kind of impact fees. It's not just development impact fees, but also they have the affordable housing linkage fee, which is associated with residential projects that are more than six units. And so I think if there's a will, there's a way. And I think at least for now, looking at how we're implementing phase one and moving forward with that, I would wholeheartedly support it. That's all I got to say to that. But I would like to hear from our staff on where we are with bringing something forward for those development impact fees.
Mayor Satrian, that's been added to the very long list of council requests, and staff is working on it as time permits, and we'll bring something forward.
I mean, recognizing that we have this also in front of us, Mr. Glanion, and I don't know what the timelines look like for those big projects, but I really don't want to lose on those opportunities. So if we need to, like, re-shift and refocus some of our attention to things that may be time-sensitive because they're going to have longer-lasting impact, then let's do that. I know you have a lot on your plate. I recognize that.
Okay. Councilmember Najarian?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chief, for your presentation. I'm really proud of my record supporting the police department for the past twenty years. I've not only given the police department everything that they reasonably asked for, but I've sought out input and further requests from the various chiefs that, probably the five or six chiefs that I've worked with. And you know where I am with law enforcement? I'm thrilled that two of my close family members are new law enforcement officers. For the record, not in the city of Glendale. There's, I guess, there's a little policy that prevents that. Hopefully, in the future, one or more of them will be able to come to Glendale. And, you know, when things got, when things got squishy back during the George Floyd movement, I was not, you know, in vogue, standing with the groups that were for defunding the police. And that was throughout the state and country, you know? Many politicians were jumping on that bandwagon. And I suffered the slings and arrows when they began their riots that May of 2020. And I posted that I had been in touch with then-Chief Paul Velitis, and that the Glendale Police were ready to protect the community. I was the one who was called out to be, to be recalled, to be impeached. Because how dare I care about how, more about how people protest than about what they're protesting about? So I bleed probably blue if you were to cut me at this point. And I am, I've asked you before what you needed. Council has asked you before what you needed, and you were very modest a year ago, and you said, no, you're good. But I understand what you're asking for. And despite coming off this discussion of the five-year forecast, I'm all in on your request. If we have to reduce personnel in other departments, too bad. I mean, police, public safety is number one in this community. If the grass has to grow a little longer, if the roads are going to have potholes, if libraries are going to have shorter hours, if plans are going to take a little bit longer to get approved, I don't care. I mean, public safety is number one. I do support the concept that Mayor Asaturian mentioned, the public safety impact fee. Unfortunately, that is a one-time, that would be a one-time fee that they would pay, and I'm wondering if there's another way we could smooth that out over to everyone's benefit, both to the developer's benefit and to our budgetary impact. So there would be some, something of a continuing resource to pay these fees, because this fifteen million, when it's up and running, is a yearly impact. So we do have to figure out a ways to do that. I also do hope that the school, the school district is willing to contribute to those school resource officers. I know they did so in the past, and I think that if we're going to up it and give them a dedicated officer, only, you know, whose only duty is to secure the school, that they also, the school district, also be willing to contribute to that. So hopefully, there will be a little bit of amelioration in that cost for the school resource officers. But I'm ready to do it, and I will make those hard cuts. You know, to be honest, if the additional revenue isn't there, I'm ready to make those cuts to fund those police officers, at least in the, which is the largest branch, which is the phase one of the twenty-three officers. So thank you, and that's where I'm at.
Okay. I'm getting a signal that Mr. Taktalian has something to say.
Sure. I mean, the question of DIF for public safety has come up a couple of times tonight. Just wanted to set expectations. By comparison, there are some cities next to us that have a public safety DIF, a development impact fee. Burbank brings in about sixty thousand annually between both police and fire. So that in and of itself isn't going to be a revenue source that could necessarily supplement this type of a need. But, and I think that, I don't know if Mr. Garcia has anything to add to it. I know that we have quite a bit of limitations with respect to those particular fees. As it stands, we already charge parks impact fees, library impact fees, and some other development impact fees as well.
Sure. Mayor Protam and Council, there is a process under state law that you have to basically do a study, as was noted, and identify the costs attributed to development. So it's a marginal cost that gets associated with a per-unit cost, and it's not necessarily, or a per-square foot cost, and not necessarily, as Mr. Taktalian alluded to, a going to be a large number. But certainly worth exploring when we look at other impact fees as well.
Okay. I have a few questions to start, and then I'll give you my thoughts. I want to start with some of the assertions that Mr. Milano made about population. He said that our report says our population has increased, but it actually has not. And he cited numbers, which, have you seen that?
I have not, and just rough numbers. I will tell you that the population numbers that we used was that roughly twenty years ago, the population was in around one ninety, and that today it sits around two hundred thousand, and that's the five percent that I spoke to residential population. I think he also threw out some numbers around staffing, and respectfully to Mr. Milano, who I like a lot, I think he's just incorrect. I've looked at those myself. And I even did some research on this, you know, this idea, this sort of plan, isn't the first time that our police department has looked at doing something like this. Chief Adams, almost two decades ago, looked to do something very similar, got into the first phase, got our organization to about two hundred sixty-eight or sixty-nine officers. And then, I think, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten happened. They had to cap that and even walk it back, and at one point got to a low of like two thirty-four, five. And we've slowly been crawling back up from that. So I don't know where he got the sworn count numbers at, but that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I think he got them from our CAFER. So they're, I think they're our numbers. And I'm, you know, I don't want to take anything away from, it's not a reflection on how I feel about this proposal. I'm just, I just want to clear up any information that might be misleading. So, I mean, he does say, and I think he pulled it on the CAFER, twenty years ago, we had two thirty-seven sworn officers. Well, in two thousand and four, we had two hundred and thirty-seven. And we had two forty-four in 2023. So maybe somebody could check that? Because I do want us to be absolutely correct with our information. And twenty years ago, he references a population of one hundred ninety-eight thousand. It's about the same today, maybe lower by, lower, according to him, by ten thousand. So if we could, I don't think we'll do it right here on the spot, but I would like to make sure that if there's any information that we've presented that's incorrect, that we correct it.
And if I could, Councilmember Brotman, I mean, I spoke to where I, we came from with the population numbers, as well as our officer count. I also just want to highlight, though, as the presentation did, that's one piece of the pie. You know, we talked about residential growth. That's something to consider, but just the development of the city as well. And I don't want that to be lost when we talk about things like the Americana that did not exist twenty years ago, and the workload associated with things like that, as well as just the development of downtown. And when you go down Brown Boulevard, it did not look like that twenty years ago and the associated challenges that come with that. So, again, it's multifaceted, it isn't just one piece. But again, nevertheless, that's.
Fair enough. And on these key performance indicators he references, and Councilmember Kusakian did, and you had a good discussion about that. I do, I do support us developing metrics that we can track over time. I know with crime levels, we have to be careful because they're national and regional trends. So looking at just what happens in Glendale is not necessarily going to tell us the story. It's how we're doing compared to these trends, right? So I would just put that out there, that I would expect, you know, I wouldn't expect a hard number. I mean, we can look at a hard number, but when we assess how we're doing, it's a lot more than that, right? And you mentioned other types of productivity metrics, which I think are good. And I do agree that survey data on how people feel because there's been so much written. I've read, you know, some interesting things about how, you know, why do people feel like crime is up when the numbers say it's down? And I think, getting back to what Councilmember Kusakian said, I think it's, people feel it's up because they see these things that are, give a sense that things are out of control, right? And so I'm glad you're thinking about that. I support that.
Hundred percent, you know, well, to your point, again, when we look at make metrics, I want us to do it again holistically. I want us to compare ourselves to ourselves, and I also want to compare us to other people and look at that from both perspectives. Talked about the survey data. I've looked at surveys that talk about, a decade-plus ago, you would go to a location, you'd see a lot of police officers, and for a lot of folks, that's stoked a sense of unsafe, you know, fear and concern. Now that has turned itself on its head, and people want to see a lot of police officers present at wherever they go, and it makes them feel safe. So to your point, that public perception, I think that's something from a public safety standpoint that I absolutely concern myself with and is an important part of the conversation.
Right. Okay. Next thing I want to ask you about these, is it called, are they called police service officers? PSOs, is that the right term?
That's correct.
Because I know that we have had a strategy, you've been implementing a strategy of hiring some people who are not sworn officers to offload some of the routine work so that our sworn officers can be out on the beat or doing something else. Can you just tell us what you've done there? And, you know, is there a number of sworn officers that you've been able to free up? Is there some way to describe the success with that? And then, following that, is that a strategy that we could continue to apply to maybe make some? to maybe make some dent in, you know, our shortfall in sworn officers who are out on the street?
That's a great question. I appreciate you asking it, and that's exactly what I'm, and we're trying to accomplish with that. And, um, understanding that, especially when you start talking about Phase Two and Three, the assets associated with that, how can we find other ways to offset that a little bit? And that was the idea with using civilians to do some of the work that we can take off the plate of our police officers, to keep them freed up, patrolling, doing traffic stops, things of that nature. So, um, we currently have, um, a program of PSOs, it's a contingent of eight of them. Um, we are literally in the process of onboarding a handful of them right now, getting them trained up. Uh, so I can't speak to what kind of success we've had. We've, it's been slow-moving and going through the recruitment on, in that, in that recruitment, getting folks hired. It is a tough position to hire for, because what the folks, not always, but typically, that we see potentially wanting to step into that, ultimately aspire to become police officers. So, it's a, the attrition rate is insane. We go through the whole hiring process, we get them on board, and whether it's within our own organization, we just sent two to the police academy, so they left the PSO classification, and now they're going to the police academy. Or in other instances, maybe they go to another organization. So, it's a tough position to recruit for, but we're in the, we're right in the sweet spot of about to onboard a handful of them. Um, again, I can't speak in too much depth yet about what kind of successes, but I tell you, the intention is to put them out in the field, to take certain low-level calls for service, uh, and duties off the plate of our police officers, so that we can in turn free up our sworn staff, to do the things that we need sworn staff to.
Right.
I will keep you posted on what that looks like.
To, you know, my, my message would be, to the extent possible, I think we should really lean in on that, because they don't come with all the same, um, public pensions and everything else. It's a lot, it's gonna be a lot less budget busting, if we can find a way to do that, right?
I couldn't agree more, and I think the idea of having a good support civilian staff, I don't even want to call it support, just civilian staff, because they, just frankly speaking, they're not as expensive and the, the pensions associated with them, but can be, in certain instances, equally as, and even in some instances, more effective than our police officers when we find some of the, the niches for them to work.
Right. Okay, um, then I guess, um, down to, uh, the, the Phase One, so 23 sworn officers, I think you, I don't know if it was in the report, or you mentioned it to me during the briefing, but four to five of those would be in traffic. And, um, you know, just as for Councilmember Kasakian, you know, the school, the school resource, um, folks are, are kind of his touchstone. I mean, I agree with that, too, by the way. But for me, I really think, you know, traffic should get a stronger emphasis here. I think, you know, we're a very safe city when it comes to crime. We're not such a safe city when it comes to our roadways, especially for pedestrians. We're not. And, um, we have so much excessive speeding, we have so much reckless driving, distracted driving, running of stops, as we hear this all the time, right? And, um, so when we think that, you know, we talk about being a safe city, we have to remember that there's two pieces to this.
Without question.
And I don't want to be patting ourselves on the back too quickly, because we still have a serious problem in this, and, and the public wants us to address it. So, as far as, you know, from my, my point of view, I would like to see more in that area. If, if there's a question of, you know, kind of balancing where, where we put these 20, that would be my vote, would be, um, to see more in traffic enforcement.
Understood, and I also want to just, you know, to your point, Councilmember Brotman, understanding that traffic is 100% a priority for us, and we talk about four or five more positions with this wave of staff, specifically to the Traffic Bureau, specifically working traffic, but also the potential 10 to 12 of these positions that we put to work patrol. Those are also officers that are gonna go out and do traffic stuff. And that's not all they're doing, they're answering calls for service, but a part of their job is to go out and do traffic enforcement, and conduct traffic, uh, stops and things of that nature. So, uh, there is, with those patrol bodies, there is, uh, an impact to traffic safety as well. I don't want to, I don't want to lose that.
Okay, um, and then, um, so now on, on the funding piece, which is the big question, um, you know, we all want to do, I want to do this. Um, we know that the community wants us to have, um, a stronger police presence. Um, I guess, you know, the question for me is, what I'm struggling with here is, it's very easy for us to say, yes, let's go ahead, and we'll deal with this revenue question, or we'll deal with this, you know, service cuts question later. I mean, Councilmember Jarian says he's all in for, you know, if he has to, we'll, we'll cut services. I think we need to spell out what services we're cutting, and what revenues we're increasing now as part of this decision. I don't think we can take these separately. It's easy to. Everybody wants to say yes, nobody wants to say no. And so, while I would love to see this start to move forward immediately, um, I also am not comfortable making one half of a decision and saying, oh, I'll, you know, I'll be all there to cut services. I want to hear which services. I think that's important. I think that's responsible and mature, and I think we have to do that.
If I could just offer something, um, I, number one, I just want to be incredibly clear, you know, Project 300, this talks about addressing all the things we talked about, workload and growth and all of those things over 300. That said, today, sitting here, wha- what I'm asking for in the recommendation going forward is, is for, for Phase One, that I feel is, is critical, vital, to keep us moving in the direction I need us moving in, and that they were, you know, when we even start talking about Phases Two and Three, those are years out with a lot more assessment, uh, and, and hard looks at it when that time comes, number one. Number two, um, you know, I highlighted, we have done an incredible job, again, with the support of this council, to, to crawl ourselves out of a pretty steep staffing hole, and we're finally getting our head above water. And whether it was lateral incentive program that was supported by this council, uh, the work that HR and my staff have done to streamline processes, there's a great deal of momentum that we have created in hiring. We are a pretty hot ticket, and where people are wanting to land, we've taken on a lo- a handful of laterals. We've hired our allocation without extra bodies, you know, of funding. We're gonna kind of shut that down. Now, when the time comes, if you say it's a year from now, we'll try to fire that back up, but I'm just telling you, that takes time. And hiring police officers is very different than many of the other positions, in that your, the recruitment process, the testing process, the background process, then they go to the academy, then they come into field training. It's really a two-year process before you have a full-fledged, self-reliant, independent police officer put out on the streets. So, to kind of stop the momentum now is going to be of also added detriment, uh, to, to, you know, to our ultimate, to our ultimate goal. And, uh, the last piece, I'll just add, when we talk about the funding source, I think you look at Phase Ones, there's certainly some impacts, five or six million dollars, it's five or six million dollars, um, that's not lost on me. But in conversation, and, 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 I think it's something that we can at least get going on and sustain for the next couple of years. There's been conversations, I've thrown out some suggestions to the CM of things that could potentially be considered as revenue sources. I think some that are coming, uh, before us here shortly for potential consideration, uh, over the next couple of years, that can really fund that Phase One long-term, well past these, you know, four, five years that we're, that we're looking at here in the forecast. So, just wanted to throw a few of those things out.
Okay, um, yeah, because I, you know, and I don't want to count on, you know, staff being wrong, because they always underestimate and over, overproduce when it comes to revenues and expenses. I know that is, that does happen, but I don't think that's something we can count on happening every year, and I don't think we can count on just some positive surprise that's gonna come down the path. I think we need to be clear-eyed about this. Development impact fees, I'm very skeptical about them, not because of the amount, but because they drive up the cost of housing, which is something we're fighting in the other direction on. So, if we start throwing more development housing fees and, fees in the mix, you know, we're making that problem worse. So, we, we do have, uh, it's challenging. It's just like we, we were talking about in the budget discussion, it's challenging. I, you know, I want to support this, uh, I would like to, I would, ideally, I would like to see us get started, but, um, I know it takes time, but like wrap this into the next budget cycle. Um, if we vote, you know, to approve this now, does that lock us in for, um, you know, this whole number, or as we get into the next budget cycle, can we have those conversations about whether we rip, you know, we just let it rip through the, the entire 23, or however many we're talking about now?
Uh, Council, uh, Mayor Protam Brotman, as, as you see on the screen, this is the impact of Phase One of the proposed Project 300. This accounts for almost just over six months of current fiscal year impact. Uh, I suppose if it's council's desire, you could adopt a plan conditionally that we, during the budget review process, instead of, um, not losing momentum, that's gonna be the challenge, but you could always say that let's make this part of the next year's budget review process, and then, um, get your questions answered, and we can wrap it into next fiscal years as opposed to the current fiscal year we're in.
Well, that, that's kind of where I am. I don't want to lose the momentum at the same time. I don't want to lock ourselves into something without having made the, uh, conscious decisions about how we're gonna pay for it. And, and that's just where I am, and I don't know how, how that plays out, but...
Just another thing, I, and again, I'm just providing information, and I totally get the, the discussion and the consideration. Another thing that we have seen when we talk about expenditures for the police department is our overtime budget, particularly over the last few years, because we have been so short-staffed. Our greatest expenditure of overtime comes from patrol. And, um, as we, you know, with, with 23 more positions, and we grow the organization, and we can find a more consistent basis in certain places, um, I feel confident in saying that, you know, the expectation for us as an organization over the next year or two, as we fill those positions, is that overtime budget should come back down as well. And, you know, we've been at a place, while we have a overtime budget allocation that's, that's frankly low for our organization, on the other hand, we've been doubling what, what that expenditure is. And, you know, when we, we go to a, a, a staffing of 271, we shouldn't be doubling our overtime anymore. We should be bringing that back down. So, there's also potential savings there, you know, a couple, two, three million dollars that could shave off of what we are currently and have been, you know, expending for the last few years.
Right, and that's not in these numbers, I imagine.
That is not.
Okay. All right, well, I've said enough, and, um, I don't know, Councilmember...
I just want to make, I, I ask a few questions, but I want to make a couple of quick comments, you know, I, in general, I, I, I agree with most of the comments my colleagues made. Um, I think we need to move forward and not lose momentum. Uh, the community has spoken. We, we remember about a year ago that the community centers at churches were packed with concerned citizens. South Glendale, the same thing, uh, Emerald Isle, I got, we all got all the phone calls. We don't want to get back to that point. We have to build this department up to a point that at least we are in par with Burbank, and we have enough resources to, uh, so our response time won't drop. Because if you lose, lose, uh, you know, people, people move around, you can't chain them down and say, no, you have to stay here for 10 years. So, and as far as the SROs and, uh, traffic and patrol, and these are all, I think, it's your department. I don't want to dictate which one comes first, which one goes last. They're all important. Schools are extremely important. Uh, traffic safety is extremely important. That's why we need to move forward with this plan, so we can accommodate at least 80% of every single item that's in front of us, and it's the most important items. As far as the budgeting goes, just want to ma- make sure that, that last year, 28, 29, that 15 million dollars is not the police department's budget, that it's increasing 15 million dollars. Uh, it was nine, nine and a half, or what have you, nights up to 15 at that point. So, we were down 9 million dollars, so it's getting up to 15 at that, in that year. So, it's, it's, it's not completely, because it gets a little bit confusing, uh, and, uh, it's 10 o'clock already. So, I just want to ma- make sure that we all are on the same page, that 12 million dollars and 27, 28 is not only the police department's increasing budget, so...
Cumulative, Councilmember Karpit.
Right, right. No, I mean, we, I understand, but we have, uh, we have this budget before, before the, the police department's, uh, you know, the Phase One budget, which was 5.7, it goes to 12 million, for example. So, uh, I, I am in support of this. I think this community is really, uh, you know, they just step, step forward when the, the, our public safety officers needed help, needed support, and I'm sure they will do that. We will figure out a way to fund this, this program. And I, I hope that we don't have to cut, I don't want to cut any other department. That's the last resort. I don't want to cut any other department. Every department is, uh, important to the city, to the quality of life, to the services they provide, uh, to, to, to our, our, our residents and our, our constituents. Uh, so, my goal is not to cut any, anyone else, but collectively find a way to support every department, including police department, including fire department. The fire chief is standing at the, uh, in the back. Uh, we heard you in the past as well, we heard the fire department. And every other department that needs, uh, more, more support, needs more resources, like planning department needs to get their entire floor remodeled and upgraded. We need to, we need to, you know, I don't want to say I want to put all our resources in one department and cut the rest of them. Every department is, you know, important, as important as the other. But with this plan, I want to move forward with Phase One. I will support that, uh, at least to get in par with Burbank. I think that, we've been hearing that for a long time, that we are short, even we are below Burbank, which is a much smaller city than us, so...
Okay, so I think we're ready for a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Last second.
So, that's B1, 2, and 3.
Um, so, before, before we take a vote on this, is there no desire to, uh, put in, um, will anyone support a, uh, motion to make sure that the first hires we make are for school resource officers in this, uh, deployment of Phase One?
I, I don't, I personally don't want to start dictating, because I, I would say, you know, it should be traffic. It should be that, I would leave that to the chief to decide.
I, 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 I agree. I think the chief ha- heard, I understand it says very, uh, close, I mean, to every, everyone's, I, I understand it's very close, near there to your heart. And I think the chief heard that, and I'm sure that he will allocate enough officers to our, our, maybe, maybe the chief can answer that, I don't know.
Councilmember Kasakian, I'll start by saying, uh, as a father of two middle and high-school-age children, uh, I assure you, school safety is max priority for me. Uh, and while I'm always gonna be dictated by what's best for the organization and the operation, what I can tell you is that in this first phase of staff, when it's all said and done, we are gonna end up with at least four SROs, uh, covering our high schools and our middle schools. Uh, and it's my hope and anticipation that that is going to be in place by the start of the following school year in September, uh, once we can get folks hired and trained, uh, and in place. So, it is absolutely, uh, without question a priority.
Uh, all right, so, um, I will accept your word on that, and I appreciate the personal viewpoint you bring in as a father. Um, I want to emphasize the importance of this, not because it's specifically important to me, although it is, as a parent, um, as a product of the public schools, who saw the benefit of having school resource officers on the campuses. And, uh, I'm just expressing my opinion, I'm not trying to get personal here with anyone. However, what I am trying to do is, uh, emphasize that when we address issues at the molecular level, at the micro-level of the schools, it pays dividends later on. We're talking about whether it's cyberbullying, drug use, um, you know, weapons that kids may bring from home into the school, uh, these are not things that are imagined. These are things that have happened in our schools, and it was already difficult enough to deal with when we had school resource officers, and right now, we don't have them. And I don't want to put this back on the school district, which is also struggling, and say, you know, we're gonna ignore, uh, these issues uh, until someone decides to step up and pay for it. Um, this is our community, the children are our children, um, and it's our responsibility as an organization to look out for them. So, I will accept your word on that. I will follow up on it in the coming years, and I will bring it up every time this comes up for review.
I know you will, just like my single SRO that's sitting behind me does every time I see him, how he needs help. So, I, uh, you have my word.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Uh, let's go to roll call.
Mayor Protam Brotman?
Yes.
Councilmembers Larpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Now, Jarian?
Yeah.
Mayor Asaturian?
Yes.
Okay, um, I think given the late hour, the fact that two of our colleagues are not feeling well...
Thank you, Councilmembers.
Sorry, thank you. We're gonna skip, um, the next item C, we'll, we'll continue that. Okay.
Mayor Protam, uh, Brotman, would you mind bringing the GWP item first, and then if I can excuse myself after that?
Okay, so we'll switch the order around, um, and I know Mr. Galanian looks upset, but we'll, we'll... we'll, we'll take this one up. I don't think there's any rush on this one.
There is no rush, Mayor Protem Brodmann, but it, it aligns well with the conversations that we're having about our five-year forecast and the budget and the cost of
I understand. Okay. I think it'll still be in our minds on January 7. Okay. So let's move to item E, Glendale Water and Power, then we'll come back to Public Works.
Yes. Item E is Glendale Water and Power regarding Glendale Care Program electric bill discount adjustments. One, resolution adjusting Glendale Water and Power's Glendale Care Program discount rate from $23.50 to $35 per month effective January 1, 2025. Two, resolution of appropriation to appropriate $800,000 for the increase in the Glendale Care Program discount rate from $23.50 to $35 per month effective January 1, 2025.
Mr. Galanian?
Mayor Protem Brodmann, my city council. I'll just turn it over to Audrinay Sayan, our Assistant General Manager, GWP Finance and Risk Management.
If there's a way to truncate the presentation, please, please do so.
I'll go fast. Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. My name is Audrinay Sayan. I am the AGM overseeing finance and risk in Glendale Water and Power. And today, we've prepared a short presentation for you regarding the Glendale Care Program electric bill discount adjustments, a report that's coming before you for decision today on adjusting their rate. To provide some background and history on the Glendale Care Program, the Glendale Care Program was created by the city council on November 12, 2008. And at the time, it was set to be a flat $10 a month, which was about 20% of the average low-income customers' bill. The rate has been adjusted throughout the years. In 2013, it was increased to $13 a month. In 2018, it was increased to $15 a month. And in 2022, it was increased to $17.50 a month. And as early as January of 2024, it was increased to $23.50, which is the current rate. And if we were not to make any changes today, it'll be $26.50 effective July 1 of 2025. The city uses 250% of the federal poverty level for eligibility requirements for low income, which, as you can see on this chart, is about $51,100 for a 1% to 2% household, goes to $78,000 for a 4% household, and reaches about $131,800 for an 8% household. Our recommendations tonight are to increase the discount from $23.50 to $35 effective January 1. This increase increases the percentage subsidy or discount from the 23% that it is currently for the low-income bill to about 34% of the average low-income bill. And we're also requesting a resolution of appropriation to increase the PBC, the Public Benefit Charge Fund budget by $800,000 to fund six months of the increased discount rate for the remainder of this fiscal year. Currently, there's about 11,314 participants with program costs totaling about $2.7 million in 2324. The increase from $23.50 to $35 adds about $11.50 a month. So it adds about $1,006 in recurring annual expenditures to the public benefit fund, which can be funded through the fund balance. That's, that's our presentation.
Okay. Questions? That's Larpetian.
Um, I have.
So you mentioned there are 11,000 account holders that they receive this. And how many, how many of them are below $51,000 that, or up to $51,000?
I don't have that data today, but we can certainly divide it up. It's, there's an app, there's a process that they file. So we'd have to go see what their income levels are and get that information for you. But 11,314 participants have qualified to be, you know, meeting the criteria of eligibility.
I think that's important for us to know because if, you know, I'm a family of five, right? If my family has $91,000 or $100,000 income, and I receive $30 a month, or $35 or $26 a month, is that, is that the case? If they have five members in their family and their income is $91,000, they receive $26? Or if we approve this, $35 a month on their electric bill?
That's right. So if they meet the eligibility requirements, on your example, if it's a family of five and has, it has that income limitations and all the other criteria are met, and they're enrolled in the Glendale Care Program, they would be receiving a $35 discount a month. So because we, we bill every two months, they'd be receiving a $70 discount on their, their bills.
And do we set the, this, this numbers, the, the income threshold, or it's a state program?
So we follow the 250% of the federal poverty level guideline. So that's set by the feds for that, for that percentage range. I believe we have options of using other poverty levels. And Mike Garcia can assist with that question as well. But I don't think we are limited to just using the 250%. It just, that's how council has adopted the procedures for this program.
And the $800,000 comes from where? Which account?
So it comes from the Public Benefits Fund, the PBC. So the 2.85% that we're charging on our electric bill is what's funding this program.
So that is going to increase, basically?
The, well, the costs in that fund are going to increase by $800,000 for this fiscal year and an ongoing $1.6 million every year thereafter.
So that 2.7 will be?
3.5-ish. Right. So it's, yeah, so it'll be around, sorry.
It will be 4.3.
4.3, yeah. That's right. Sorry. The purchase, so it depends on how many participants we have in the program. The enrollment can vary from people leaving the program and entering the program. As it stands today, we have about 11,314, but that number could increase or decrease annually. Somebody may choose not to, someone's income may go up and they may no longer be eligible, and the other way around, someone could become eligible during the year.
Okay. I, I don't know. This is the first time we're discussing, and I'm seeing the, the income levels. And I'm having a little hard time of, if you have $90,000 income and you get $30 or $20 a month subsidy, or, that's what this is, basically, right? We're reducing their bill by $20 a month. I, I mean, if you are a senior citizen, you're disabled, you have one income, or you're a senior couple, you have two, two senior citizen income, and I understand that, maybe $50 for them. But if you, if you make 130, what was the last number?
131,000.
131,000. And you get $30 a month. I don't, I don't see that, that, the logic behind it, to be honest. We need to concentrate on lower-income families, especially seniors. And, and I don't know if this is the right time to address that, or we have to re-agendize it on top of every other items that are in the, in the, in the pipeline or during our budget session. Because, basically, because the, the amount is going from 2.7 to 4.2, and other ratepayers are paying for it, which is fine if it goes to low-income families.
No, 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 no. I think there's a misunderstanding. I want to clarify that. The PBC budget, the percentage that residents are charged, will not change.
No.
It is what it is. It's how much of that budget gets allocated towards this program versus some other program.
Yeah.
It won't cost you, or me, or anybody that's not eligible, any more money because we're doing this.
This $800,000 comes out of that 2.7?
So the $800,000 comes out of the fund balance that's accumulated in the public benefit funds. The source of revenue in that fund is that 2.85%, which will not change. It'll just still be 2.85% of your electric rate charges for that, for that billing, gets deposited into the public benefit funds to fund variety of programs, one of which is this program.
So that 2.8% on utility bills will not increase?
No, it will not.
Okay. That's what I was asking. Because you mentioned it gets to 4.3. The only way that will go up to 4.3 is if you increase that, that rate. So.
So the 4.3, the increase is coming from basically fund balance. And then if you want to reallocate it amongst other programs, if there's a shortage, you have the option of doing that, too.
All right. Okay. Mayor, are you finished? Yeah. Okay. Mayor Asatran.
I just, I wanted to clarify a couple of points. I was the one that had requested that this item be brought forth. And my main concern was that, obviously, we've all heard from our residents and our small business owners about their inability to cover their utility bills after the increases. I know that I'm not alone in this, in saying that there are many residents who are now putting their utility bills on their credit cards. The whole point of this was for us to take a look at the different programs that we have and see how we readjust those programs in order to help our families and our residents at this time. When you speak to the, the bill of a low-income household, and you're saying 35, people's bills have gone from like, you know, if they were paying $150, I'm getting emails from folks that are now paying $500, $600. I'm trying to understand when you call it a low-income household bill, is their bill different than everybody else's?
So the average low-income bill that's in this Glendale Care Program is about $102.95. So this, this isn't the population that's getting the large bills. These are the low-income customers, who's on average, the Glendale Care participants have about $102, $103 bill, monthly bill. And that's, so that's how these calculations are derived.
Okay. Are, are you guys still planning to bring back a report of all the different programs that we have for us to take a look at what we need to shift money from, and if we need to create a different kind of fund, at least for the time being? And I wasn't just looking at individuals that are what you would consider low-income in this bracket. I also recognize that there may be people that are not falling into these brackets, but they have fixed incomes and fixed expenses. And their inability to pay their utility bills at this point is putting them into debt. So it wasn't just for low-income families that I had brought this up with. I just said, you know, even somebody that has, maybe is, is on a fixed income, has a mortgage, and all of a sudden, their utility bills went high up. And I have raised this time and again with our tier system of, you know, I think the bigger your family is, the, the more you end up having to pay and because you fall into a different tier. So I'm just trying to figure out where this reallocation is coming from, and if there are opportunities for us to look at the other programs that we have and decide as a council if, at least temporarily, we do away with some of the other programs for the time being to help assist our residents with their utility bills.
Thank you for that question, Mayor Asatran. This is Scott Mellon, Assistant General Manager of Power Management. Unfortunately, the Public Benefit Charge Program is a very narrow scope of where we can apply money. Obviously, the 2.85% that we collect from all the customers is put into a pool. And there are four qualifying factors, but one of them is the low income. We have four programs on the low income. So the, our, our ability to reallocate and to give to a larger group is very limited. And that's kind of why we set up more of these rebate programs, so that people can adopt energy efficiency implementations and kind of help us mitigate our peak load. That's kind of the goal of the PBC. That's one of the goals. We are more than happy to come back and, and review the existing programs that we have. And in fact, we're looking to do that and may come back with all the programs, make recommendations about ones that we plan on retiring, or reallocating to, or, or, you know, testing to see if we can do something more with them to, to attract people to joining those programs more. And again, I'm saying that for May because that's when we're planning on doing. The, the current programs come to an end and we want to adopt the new programs in the next two-year period. So we're more than willing to do that. I know that if council has interest in any of the particular programs we already have set up, or they have ideas about programs they'd like to implement that are new and we can try them. Very interested in doing that. We'd love to roll that in. We, again, we do have limitations, though, in how we spend PBC money. So we're kind of struck, we're kind of stuck in a niche there.
Does the, but that also includes things like the, I think we had like a $50 rebate for like a refrigerator, if you turn a year-old refrigerator or something. I remember that because, but I, I think my, my question remains, so for example, if we had allocated $500,000, say, or I don't know how much we've allocated to that program, right?
Right.
Year after year, we're seeing that only, I don't know, $10,000 is being spent from that account. Then that's evidence enough that, A, that program isn't as, as it needs to be in order for it to be fruitful, for it to meet its goals. But there's an opportunity in that there's a pot of money sitting there under a line item that has evidence now that it's not going to be used. And where can we use it that would be better? And especially at this time. I think that's where I was trying to come out when I introduced this item and requested this item. So.
Yeah, I completely agree with you. We, in the past, when we developed the PBC programs, we were just trying anything that was going to get of interest and get people involved. I think over the last couple of years, we've become more mature in our process and our analysis so that we can look at these things and see, you know, what really makes sense, what's attracting people, and where can it benefit us as a whole. So we, we definitely plan on retiring several programs. We've got some good recommendations for that coming up. And we're, we're putting together the analysis to make sure it can stick, especially makes sense to the council. But yes, like the $50 refrigerator program, you know, there's only so many refrigerators you could buy. You kind of, you come to an end pretty quickly on that program. So you're right, that's a good example. And that's the kind of stuff we're looking at, whether or not it continues to make sense.
Okay. Thank you.
Speaking of, speaking of programs, just want to, I'm going to use this opportunity to say that California came out with a e-bike rebate program of $2,000 for those that qualify. So just, just to note for that, because that was big news that came out.
Right.
$2,000?
That would be more for low-carbon fuel standard. We could qualify under that.
Okay.
I'll send you guys all the details. Maybe we can get some notices out for them.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Najarian? Questions, comments?
No, I, I think as long as we're, we're, I mean, dealing specifically with the issue before us, I have no problem with that being raised. And I think that's, as was said, commensurate with the City of Los Angeles relief program. So I'm okay with it.
Okay. And same, okay. And we have one speaker?
We have two speakers.
We have two. Okay. Let's, let's hear from our speakers, please.
Our first speaker is Mike Borusov. Mike, you have three minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. I want to come out in support of this program and increasing it to $35. I do want to speak a little bit to the definitions of low income. I think we're being a little too conservative here, and I'd prefer to see this actually program be expanded. Currently, for our housing needs, we use area median income. So 0% to 30% would be extremely low income. 30 to 50 would be very low income. And 50 to 80 would actually be low income. So if we're doing a two-person household at low income for the City of Glendale, that would be $76,250. Sorry, $76 for a, excuse me, for low-income status. We're currently at about $51,000, I believe, for the current program. And so that 20K increase would go in line with our housing allocation needs assessment that we use for the state. Now, I understand that there might not be enough money to increase it and serve more people, but it's just something to keep in mind, especially when we're throwing around terms like low income. We want to make sure we're being accurate and having our cities be cohesive. You might qualify for one program from the federal government, might qualify one from the state, but not for the City of Glendale. And that presents difficulties for a lot of people who live on a fixed income, and even people who do have an income that does change over time. You mentioned you have a five-person household. You mentioned you have a five-person household or a lot of people who do have like four, five, six-person households. They have kids, they're moving around with grandparents, grandparents are moving in, aunts, cousins, in and out. And this program would deeply benefit these individuals. As you know, fixed income, very difficult to save your money, especially with inflation. And of course, taxing ourselves in, out of this problem is also not going to help. But this thirty-five-dollar rebate program will be great. It'll subsidize the cost for low-income families in Glendale. But I would just ask to maybe just look into increasing the definition of low income. If not today, then another day. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is by Ellen Durham. You have three minutes.
Thank you, council members. I do support this increase, just for any viewers, because I think the discussion probably is capable of, because it's bits and pieces capable of confusing some of the viewers where the money's coming from, what it is. You know, the state mandates this public benefit charge. It's two-point-eight percent of customers' electric charges, electric only. I think if I remember correctly, it might generate in total about nine million dollars a year in Glendale.
Eight-point-nine, yeah, very close.
And therefore, that's why you can move the money around. The state mandates it needs to be, the PBC funds need to be used for low-income subsidies and energy efficiency programs. But you, the city has the ability to move those allocations around within the nine-million-dollar annual funds. A lot of GWP customers are struggling now with the massive electric rate increases. There's another eleven percent rate increase coming in July. There's going to be a cost of service analysis for water rates. So I'm sure water rate increases are on the horizon. So I think it's appropriate that more of the PBC charges or funds be used for low-income households to pay their utility or electric bills. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
That is all.
Okay. I haven't made any, I mean, my comments are pretty simple, I support this. I just have, I guess, one question and then one comment to go along with it. So once we implement this, how much, what percentage of our PBC budget is now going to be earmarked for low income?
It's going to be about half.
About half?
About half.
Okay. And, you know, my only comment about this is I think, you know, right now, this is the right thing to do for sure. Over time, I want to make sure that we're putting, you know, we continue to put an emphasis on energy efficiency because that's a way to get people's bills lower permanently, rather than just giving them a handout. You know, I've said this before, you're not just giving them a fish, you're teaching them how to fish. So we need to keep a focus on that and not, not let that go away because that, that helps people in the long run. But other than that, I support it. So are there any other questions, comments, or is somebody ready to make a motion? Councilmember?
Two quick questions or comments. How many customers do we have? Eighty thousand?
I think it's eighty-six thousand if I'm not mistaken.
Eighty-six thousand? And eleven thousand of them received this program. They're, they're, they're basically enrolled in this program. Yeah, I, I, I'm not very clear as to, I, I, it's not the amount or anything. I, I'm not very clear as to what with this whole thing is because I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain from voting because many things were said about the people not being able to pay their utility bills and everything. And there are more increases coming next year, about eleven or fourteen percent by July of next year. And overall, it's like forty-five to fifty percent increase, cumulatively maybe more. But what does this do, that twenty dollars or thirty dollars for an income, a family of income of hundred thousand? I, I don't understand what, what this is doing for, for people because if they can't pay their, you know, I was one of them. We all had the bump, right, on, on, on our, our, our electric bills or our utility bills in general? And it went from, I don't know, six hundred dollars a month to nine hundred, for example, a month. I don't know what this twenty or thirty dollars does for people. Do we have a, a report as to what the end result of this program is?
So I, I believe what you're looking for is, on average, how much of an impact it has on the customer's bill, right? So in this case, the average bill is a hundred and two dollars. So they're not in the category of, they may be in the category if they're a larger family, but if they're in the category of having a six hundred to nine hundred dollar increase, it just gives them a seventy-dollar discount on their billing because they're.
So this eleven thousand accounts, their, their average monthly bill is a hundred, a hundred and twenty dollars a month?
Exactly. So they're not on the high end.
A little bit more clear.
And this is eleven thousand out of a total, you might have said it. How many residential customers do we have, sixty?
Residential? Eighty, I think it's eighty-six thousand or eighty-nine thousand, eighty-nine thousand.
All right. A motion?
There was a motion, I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Brodmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Skarpetian?
It's more clear for me now, yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian? Councilmember Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asatirian?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Now on to item D.
Yes, item D is Public Works Regarding Award General Services Agreement for Final Phase, Phase Three of the Sanitary Sewer Closed-Circuit Television CCTV Condition Assessment and Recommendation Services. One Resolution to Dispense with Competitive Bidding and Authorize the City Manager or Designee to Execute a GSA with Downstream Services Inc. to provide the Phase Three of the Sanitary Sewer CCTV Condition Assessment and Recommendation Services for one million nine-hundred-forty-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirteen dollars plus the fifteen percent contingency of two-hundred-ninety-one-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-two dollars, subject to the approval of the city attorney.
Okay. Do my colleagues need a report on this?
I, I don't. And I think it's a, I'll just say that this is a very important project to move forward with. Obviously, the conditions of some of our sewers are, it's, they're, some of them are over a hundred years old. So I think anything that helps us get a grip on what's happening is important to do.
Okay. Mr. Galanian, can we just dispense with a, with a presentation? Maybe just have a very, like, very brief summary of what we're deciding on here?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of council. Yes, the council has seen this item before. This is our CCTV sewer assessment program. This is phase three of the program. We've completed, you have, we didn't want to do a presentation, so I'll, I'll just wing it here. We do, the council has seen this before for phase one and phase two, where we, they awarded the contract to Downstream Services. Downstream Services has, has completed phase one in December, I'm sorry, November of twenty-twenty-two and in, are currently about fifty percent done with phase two. We, we broke down the project, we have twelve maintenance districts. We broke down the project and doing four maintenance districts each fiscal year. So we are, by the end of the phase two, we have eight maintenance districts completed and we'll be focusing the last four districts, which are roughly geographically Rancho and the district south of the one-thirty-four freeway. At the end of the day, we will have CCTVed one-point-eight-five-million linear feet of sewer line. The, the reason we're here this evening is because Downstream Service has been doing an exceptional job. We feel for the reasons of cost-effectiveness and the quality of work and consistency of the program that we should consist, continue with Downstream Services to complete the whole project. Therefore, we were requesting that council consider dispensing with competitive bids and awarding the program the third phase to Downstream Services. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Any questions?
I, I appreciate that staff has come to us requesting a, a reapproval for phase three versus just, you know, handing the contract entirely to any vendor. It helps us to determine how the work has been progressing and from what staff has told us, it is going well. And with that, I'll make the motion.
Hey, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion, second, roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, do we have any speakers?
We do not have any speakers on this item.
Okay, thank you, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Brodmann?
Yes.
Councilmembers Skarpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asatirian?
Yes.
Okay, per Mayor Sotrin.
Yeah. I'm gonna, I'm gonna hop off if that's okay.
Before, before you leave, Mayor, what, what happened to item eight C?
We are, we are continuing eight C till.
We have full council.
We have, yeah, January twelfth, fourteenth.
And what is the, what is the, the process for that? Is it, is it, do we have to take a vote on an item being removed or postponed? Or is the mayor's discretion? I just want to understand it.
Mayor and council.
Mayor Protem's discretion.
Mayor Protem, council. So I practiced it and that was one of the items that's part of that report that we're, we have on, on calendar. But the practice had been, once it was on the agenda, to at least have a council, develop a council consensus to remove it. And I do believe that's what Mayor Protem, he, he mentioned that he was going to recommend pushing it to the fourteenth because we were given the lateness of the hour. But technically, it does require a vote to move it off.
I think we need to take a vote. I mean, I'm not saying I'm against it, but.
Yeah. But again, I thought he, he sort of, I thought the Mayor Protem actually asked for the consensus and mentioned he didn't, he didn't get an objection, so that was, that was my understanding.
My acclamation.
I didn't really do that, but can, can I get a vote by acclamation that we continue this until we have full council?
I support the move.
I support it too.
Okay.
I support it too, but I just want to make sure we are.
Yes.
Okay. So.
I moved it.
Sorry about that, I didn't follow proper procedure. Okay. And at, at the mayor's request, we are also going to continue, if that's okay, the discussion of, under, under new business, discussion of city policy regarding the detention of individuals based on immigration status. We're going to also continue that.
Correct, unless there's any objection from council.
Is there any objection?
No objection.
Given the lateness of the hour and the.
No, no objection.
Okay. And I appreciate my colleagues at home sticking it out till ten forty-three. Okay. So we have now oral communication?
Can we take a two-minute?
Yes, we.
Oh. Yeah, I guess. How many do we have?
We have one.
Can we, can we push through?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oral communications, this, I'm sorry. Oral communications discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. We have one speaker. Hovik Avakian, you have five minutes. And we just got a call as well.
Thank you, city council. We waited all, all day long for me to come over here and talk to you guys. I'm extremely happy what happened last week when you guys voted against the bike lane in, on Brand Boulevard. By voting against it, you guys made all the people that were against it one more time happy. And I'm happy that you guys came to your senses that the City of Glendale doesn't want bike lanes anywhere you want to mention it. But unfortunately, that cost one-point-eight-million dollars. And now it's going to cost another five-hundred-forty-thousand dollars to remove it. All day long, I've been hearing that you guys are juggling money from left to right, you know, to see, you know, how you guys can pay this program. The police officers want more money and stuff like that. And without the right recommendations from the city staff, the design and stuff like that, you guys went ahead with that project and it backfired on everyone, especially us as the taxpayers with the dollars that could have gone to a different program and would have benefited otherwise. I hope you guys will consider to remove all the bike lanes from all the projects that you guys have approved. If that's too much to ask, then please, try to see if you guys can, on Locker Center project, which I live right on Locker Center, to have a different outreach program, which a gentleman earlier talked about their outreach program, which is a joke. Couples, a couple, posts here, posts there, who in the hell follows Glendale City's website on a daily basis? There's two-hundred-thousand people in Glendale, otherwise it would crash. Your website would crash if we follow you every day. So nobody gets notified like that. It has to be, from city council, there has to be a, a different program in order to have the outreach program really get to people and ask them to come to the meetings more. We had four people on that meeting out of two-hundred-thousand people on the, in Glendale City. That is a joke. You guys have to find a different way of getting to the people. And the same thing happening, Locker Center. You guys sent flyers, vague flyers, that nobody understood anything. And among other pamphlets that we get on a daily basis with advertisements and stuff like that, it might have been thrown to the trash cans. So you guys have to consider to get people in there. We have a beautiful community center in Locker Center, Spar Heights Community Center. Ask people to come over there, present whatever you have, get the people to understand the program and see if there is a outrageous, you know, anger among the people or for it. And then go spend millions of dollars. And I believe Locker Center project is much more than the Glendale brand project. So please do consider that. We do not want a reduction on the streets. We do not want reduction on the parkings and, and bike lanes. Specific bike lanes is not safe for the bikers either, with all the debris, all the, all the things that can come. And it would, it would, and as you saw, the, the numbers dropped tremendously in Brand because they don't feel safe driving in a, in a specific bike lane. So that's my suggestion. Please invite everybody again if you don't want to eliminate it. And one last thing, the elections are coming in two thousand twenty-six. Remember, your decisions do matter, Glendale City people. Do listen what you guys are saying. Yes and no votes do matter. And believe me, when the time comes, the people that are against you guys will use that footage and will camp against you guys. And it's up to you, whatever you guys want to do. Thank you very much for your time, it's late. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our last public comment by Patrick Murphy. Patrick, you're on air, you have five minutes.
Good evening again, council members. Sobering financial reports this evening. Thank you for doing it in the evening.
Did he speak in the three-minute?
At a special section at two P M.
I'm sorry.
One second, one second.
Mr. Murphy, we are unable to hear you.
Did he speak in the three-minute section?
Yeah. It wasn't giving.
So please let him know.
You made a, a public comment during the first oral communication, the three-minute section, so you're unable to make a comment right now. Our apologies, thanks.
Okay, so we have, I think we have two new business items?
Yes.
Councilmember Skarpetian?
I move that the city attorney, B. N. Herba, is authorized to initiate a legal action in Los Angeles Superior Court. The names of the defendants and other particulars shall be disclosed, disclosable upon the filing and service of said action upon the defendant. The city attorney is further authorized to incur any and all expenses necessary in connection with said matter.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Protam Brothman?
Yes.
Councilmembers Skarpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asateryan?
We may have already.
No longer online.
All right, and I move that the city attorney, B. N. Herby, be authorized to resolve the lawsuit entitled Azadui Khachaturian et al. versus City of Glendale et al., case number 22GDCV01106, in exchange for a full release of all claims in the amount of $65,000 with the city, to be reimbursed by its insurance carrier for all amounts in excess of its remaining self-insured retention. The settlement is not an admission of any liability whatsoever for any wrongdoing with respect to plaintiff, by defendant, or by any person or department, but it is a compromise of a disputed claim.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Mayor Protam Brothman?
Yes.
Councilmembers Skarpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Asateryan?
Okay, and that is it, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
We are, oh, second?
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.